You are on the record.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, I'd like you to make sure you turn off your cell phones or any electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If anyone present is planning on presenting testimony, please sign the sheet at the back, if you haven't already. It is Wednesday, the 12th. The time is 6:00. The time set for public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to rearrange the agenda for numerous reasons tonight. We're going to go ahead and we'll keep Dry Creek Ranch subdivision as number one, and then we're going to move to Scott Phillips as number two. Then we'll hear Trade Winds General as number three, and then Nadine Bostwick as number four, and then the Peregrine Fund as number five, and then we will take up the unfinished business of Keith Hill and John Fiorino.
Is there a second? Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Chair, I will second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just, Mr. Chair, we were directed by staff, and with the length of the number of interviews for the last one, the other one should go fairly quickly, so we wanted to make it more convenient.
It does make sense. It seems like that one is going to be longer, and there's no sense of everybody else waiting around for that. All right. You've heard the motion, and we've had a discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Okay. So, we have first up, we have Dry Creek subdivision, final plat number six. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and good evening. This first administrative item is a final plat for Dry Creek Ranch subdivision number six. This is a residential subdivision with 59 lots. Property contains about 18 acres, and staff has reviewed the submission and finds that it complies with all applicable conditions of approval, Ada County law, and the State of Idaho code, and recommends that the board authorize...I will pause, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Richard. We didn't open the public hearing on this, so we're going to open-
Administrative, we don't have to.
Oh, well, maybe I read it wrong. Okay.
Yeah, it's just an admin item.
Go ahead, then.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, yes, again, the staff is recommending that the board authorize the chair to sign the plat.
All right. Is there any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, as an admin item, I reviewed the plat and the requirements that have all been met, so I'll be ready to make a motion if we're ready.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
Okay, I move to approve Dry Creek Ranch subdivision final plat number six, and authorize the chairman to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next up, we'll have Scott Phillips, item number 202-100177.
Staff, did receive a request to table this application. The signposting was not done in accordance to the Ada County Code, so we are asking that you table this item until June 2nd at your next board hearing.
Okay. Do we have any further, any discussion on that? Is there a motion to table it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to table 202-100177, Scott Phillips, to June 2nd, 2021.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, is there, is there a discussion on the motion to table it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Number three, we have Trade Winds General, action 202-100631-ac-v, Trade Winds General. Let me see, where are we at on that one? Trade Winds. Okay, it's my understanding staff is requesting the application be tabled.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. We'd like for this application to be tabled to the June 2nd public hearing.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, staff, can you state for the record why this one's being tabled?
Mr. Chairman- Commissioner Kenyon, when staff was doing the analysis of this application, reviewing it, we determined that there was an additional variance that needs to be applied for in terms of lot coverage, and so because the application was, was not noticed for that additional variance, the application needed to be tabled, so we'd have time to renotice the application to include that additional variance for lot coverage.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, does a public hearing have to be opened for this, or can we proceed to a motion?
No, it's administrative. Is there a motion?
We're going to table it, yes, administrative. Yeah, I'll make the motion to go ahead and table also 202-100631-ac-v, Trade Winds General, for the reasons identified by staff here tonight, and table it to June 2nd, 2021.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye.
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 Okay, we, uh...I'll now open the public hearing on application number 201-800-280-CU-TU, Nadine Bostwick. We'll hear from staff, then, then we'll take testimony.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2018-00280-CU-TE is a board-level time extension for a conditional use to construct 100-foot-tall commercial cell tower and antenna structure with associated equipment, storage, and a fenced leased area. The property is located at 1195 South Linder Road and consists of approximately 1.123 acres, and as you can see on the map here, it's basically located at the end of South Linder Road, just north of the interstate. The time extension is needed because for the past, this is the applicant's first board granted time extension. If the board were to approve of this time extension, it could be given until April 23rd, 2023. The time extension is needed for, because for the past several years, wireless carriers have been involved in mergers or allocating building funds to other areas of the industry such as 5G service and small cell service. Staff finds that this application applies with Ada County Code, and I'll stand for any questions.
I have no questions, staff.
Thank you, Brent. I have no questions.
You have any questions, Commissioner?
No questions.
Is there any public testimony provided? Yes, sir?
Um, sorry, the applicant is online.
Oh, the applicant, okay, we'll hear from the applicant first, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. The applicant's online, wants to testify?
One second, having some internet-
If it, difficult is? Well, we got the IT guy coming to fix it. Sorry, just a moment.
I don't know, just drop.
Just drop.
So, send it.
Sir, did you sign up at the end of the-
I did.
Okay.
I'm not on the-
That's where we need mood music.
Sir, you could probably take a seat while, before we get to-
All right, I have-
You want to take a seat while we have the other person testify?
It's the applicant.
I have the applicant, Andy Cockle.
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear, uh, the applicant's name is Andy?
Yes, hi, Andy Cockle, 1815 North 11th Street, Boise, representing Maverick Towers.
Okay.
Good evening, thanks for your time. Yes, we're here, as Brent stated, is for a time extension for 100-foot wireless telecommunication monopole. As he also stated, there's been a lot of activity on the carrier level at different types of technology, 5G and small cell. This site was originally intended to be a Sprint site when they first approached us, and we requested the conditional use permit approval. They then merged with T-Mobile, and the site was put on hold for approximately two and a half years. They went through the merger process at the federal level, and that was recently completed, and we've been in talks with T-Mobile, and they have indicated that they are interested in the site and hope to approve funding for it in early first quarter of next year. In addition, also, the carriers have allocated their money to other types of installations in the meantime. You know, this is, uh...something that we have to work with the carriers on. They all have different timing on their funding and where they allocate their resources to different markets, so we're confident that it's going to move forward here in the near future, and we speak your approval here tonight.
Thank you. Is any questions for the applicant?
No, Mr. Chair, but I have a question for staff.
Okay.
So, Brent, when we approved this one, is there any conditions that is, that it was based upon the, one of the providers, like Sprint, he said it's, you know, now it's mobile, it's one of the other ones, and they could continue to move, it sounds like. Are there any conditions, or it was just based on Maverick owning it?
It was just based on Maverick owning it, Commissioner Kenyon.
Okay, no conditions. Thank you.
And I have a question for staff. How long is the extension being requested for?
They are requesting a two-year extension.
Two-year extension from today?
It would be from when, be from April 23rd, so the application, basically with this time extension, the two years would be from when it, the administrative time extension expired, and so this would give them until April 23rd, 2023, to complete the project.
Okay. Thank you. Is any other, other questions for, from staff or for the applicant?
No, no questions.
Okay, we'll take testimony from others, if you'd like. Sir? Could you state your name and tell us who you represent?
I'm Clint Boudel, and I'm the neighbor just to the west of that property. And I got some concerns because I understand Meridian has allocated money to put a four-lane road and overpass over the interstate, and that's going to change the access to that property. You won't have Linder Road to pull in on. You're going to have something, and I don't know what it is, to get alongside of the overpass ramp to get to that property. And to put up 100-foot cell tower and maintain it, you have to have 140-foot of boom on your crane to do maintenance after it's erected. So, to get that big of a crane in to that access of that property, going to be some logistics there. Now, there's overhead power line very close in proximity to where they want to put that tower up. Now, this is a residential neighborhood. The man already has wire guys' vehicles parked on his lot and using his shop building as warehouse. I don't know if he's leasing it to him, or if he's doing it out of good faith out of his heart. I haven't seen it, but I see, I can look over my fence and count a dozen pickups there every night. So, he is already going around the covetances of the subdivision by having a business in a residential neighborhood. Less than a mile straight down the interstate is that new development. There is a cell tower there. You got Camping World right across the street, and you got Kendall Motor Group with a new facility right across the interstate. Those are both commercial properties. This cell tower, in my opinion, would be much better suited on commercial property than in a residential neighborhood.
Mr. Chair, if I may, sir, tonight, the testimony that you can provide is really only on the time extension. We've already heard the application, and so this isn't the correct place and time for that. The fact that you brought up that the, the property is changing, however, is correct. We did approve or were supporting an overpass to go over that area, so I just don't want you to go down and start testifying over something that we can't even take up tonight. But if you would like to, if you're concerned about the overpass going over, and you think that it's going to change the configuration of that property, that is something that we could have staff look into.
But put the overpass in, I'm all for that. It's a cell tower, does not need to be there. They do not need a, a time extension. There's other properties besides residential neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, this gentleman brings up a good point, though. We did just recently support that overpass going in. Do we, does staff know? You could sit down, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, you bet. Will that change the, the configuration of that property and ingress and egress, like the gentleman said, with the, with the crane? Do we know that yet?
I'm not aware of how there, how that will change the egress and ingress of that property. I would assume that the, you know, traffic engineers with ACHD and ITD would probably work with the property owners in order to provide them a suitable access to the property, and so there could be, you know, a driveway or backage road further along Linder Road so that they would be able to access the property. Richard or Leon may have a little bit more information than, than I do, but that's kind of what, what I know at this moment.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kenyon, to answer your question, given the proximity that, that particular parcel to what would be the overpass, there would definitely be some kind of impact to the access to the site, so like Brent mentions, they always provide some kind of alternative access in, in lieu of direct access to Linder Road there, but there will be some, some impact. It's very close.
Well, for me, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know what the anticipated impact is going to be for the neighbors. These cell towers are controversial to begin with, and we are very specific about the details when we approve these, and so before we extend this for two years, I'd like to table it for staff to do some investigation with ACHD or whoever the parties are involved.
Well, we haven't closed the public hearing yet. Is there, is there any other testimony that anybody wants to make?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I just remind you that we do have the applicant on, on the WebEx as well, if they-
Okay.
Prefer to allow them to rebut any of the testimony.
Uh, yeah. What's his name?
Andy.
Andy? Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Uh, would you like to come in?
The concerns about the location at the original conditional use permit process in regards to the overpass, I'm not sure how that's going to impact it. I know there is going to be access to the site. It's not required to bring a crane in there to maintain the tower. We have people that can climb the tower, and we can use man lifts that don't require a lot of room. We are located on the western side of the parcel, which is quite a ways away from the proposed overpass, so I'm not sure how that's going to impact it at all. And when we did the original sighting of this site, we did contact multiple property owners in the area, and I provided a list of those at the original conditional use permit hearing. Camping World, a lot of the commercial locations across the street were just not interested. That's why we ended up here. And in regards to the CCNRs, they do not impact this particular property, even though it is part of the subdivision. There was four different parcels that were exempted from the CCNRs when they were created.
Okay, is there any question, other questions to the applicant?
No.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, then. The, this public hearing is closed. What is the wishes, is there any discussion amongst the board?
Mr. Chair, I, I still want to table this. Again, these are really sensitive subjects, and, and we understand everybody wants their cellphone, and everybody wants to be able to use their cellphone and have, you know, emergency capabilities and all those good things, but they don't want the cell towers to be seen. So, this is a real balancing act, delicate one for us. I just really want to make sure that the overpass isn't going to dramatically change anything. Andy said he didn't know as well, so I think he would probably want to know as, as well as the neighbors. So, I would suggest tabling this to a date that would be suitable for staff, giving them enough time to investigate further.
Okay.
Do you have a date for us?
Would we like to do the next public hearing, June 2nd? So, what I could do is I could check with ACHD, and we, this, I may need additional time, but at least with the next public hearing, I can give you an update of, of what I was able to find out, and then if we need to table again, we could table it again to the July hearing. Would that work?
Sure.
Is there any other discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to go ahead and table 201-800-280-CU-TE to June 2nd, 2021, and instruct staff to do further investigation regarding the overpass that's going in, the property, and impacted neighbors.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table 201-800-280-CU-TU to June 2nd. All in favor say aye, aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we next have for, up for discussion, 2008-00175-CU-TU, the Peregrine Fund. Let's see here. Okay, we'll have a staff report first.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2008-00175-CU-M-TE is a board-level time extension. Okay. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2008-00175-CU-TE is a board-level time extension for an administrative modification to an approved conditional use application for the World Center for Birds of Prey in order to relocate the Welcome Center at a new parking area as well as new outdoor exhibits. The property is located at 5668 West Flying Hawk Lane. The improvements will be located on 80 acres of the approximately 580-acre Peregrine Fund property. The initial conditional use application was approved through a conceptual development plan for the World Center for Birds of Prey.
Brent? I'll need to open the public hearing. This is, I'm just administering, so the, the public hearing is now open. Now you can-
Okay, okay. Do you want me to start from the beginning, or just kind of where I left off?
Finish up, you can just-
Okay. In 2019, the applicant received approval of the administrative modification to that conceptual development plan. The time extension is needed to compensate for delays due to COVID-19, along with the schedule of breeding condors. The condors are highly sensitive to loud noises and construction equipment during their breeding season. Staff finds that this application applies with Ada County Code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Is there any questions from the commission?
No, Mr. Chair, not for me.
I have no question. Does the applicant wish to offer testimony?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me.
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioner Beck, and fellow commissioners. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture, 200 West 36th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83714. Thank you for your consideration of our time extension for our conditional use permit this evening, and I will defer a portion of my time to Tate Mason, the director of the World Center for Birds of Prey.
Thank you. I couldn't quite remember all that, so appreciate that, Jeff.
Okay.
Hey, can we go to the next slide? So, the World Center for Birds of Prey is the headquarters of the Peregrine Fund, international nonprofit organization located right here, south of Boise and Ada County. We're best known for the recovery of the Peregrine Falcon. Next slide, please. Recovery, one of the most successful conservation recoveries of all time, memorialized on the Idaho State Quarter. As of 2007, Dirk Kemptorn, the Honorable Dirk Kemptorn, who is on the campaign, cheering the campaign for this expansion of our facilities, was instrumental in not only getting the Peregrine Falcon on the quarter, but also in the recovery of the bald eagle, which happened also in 2007. Next slide, please. Tom Cade was the founder of the Peregrine Fund, and he was a mentor of Morley Nelson. Morley Nelson was also a mentor of Tom Cade, and they were great collaborators, and Morley Nelson was one of the reasons that the Peregrine Fund came to Boise in 1984. And where we started raising endangered falcons in captivity, first Peregrine Falcons, Alpamato Falcons, Mauritius kestrels, and later California condors, and I threw some baby falcons in for everybody's enjoyment. Next slide, please. Now, we got falcons falling out of the sky in downtown Boise, which is a great success story, really, to, to be able to see such a creature up close nesting on the One Capital Center down, downtown Boise. And next slide. So, the World Center for Birds of Prey, we have, we have projects, the Peregrine Fund has projects all over the world, but we're located right here in Ada County. Next slide. And we bring science to life for area kids. We've had, we host about 5,000 students per year, and we provide unforgettable experiences with raptors and illustrate how we use science in order to study birds of prey. Next slide. Now, this is a quick picture there of our field trip program, and, next slide, please. And we use the power of observation to teach science. So, observation is a foundational skill in science, and so there's a student right there with a California condor feather. Next slide. We also provide opportunities for youth to get involved with our programs, and so this is our Raptor High program, which we've been involved with for about the last seven years, bringing high school students on as volunteers for the summer. Next slide. And we also provide opportunities for scouting projects, like Eagle Scout projects, like we're doing here. Next slide. Our visitation is increased 48% over the last five years pre-pandemic, and we are essentially at capacity, and so this expansion is meant to, so we can meet capacity. Next slide, please. We started with raising falcons on the hill south of Boise, and, next slide, and we found that an overwhelming interest in our operations, and here's a picture of, from 2019, in our fall flights program. And so we are challenged for this amazing interest that our community has in the operations of the World Center for Birds of Prey. And, next slide. And we are trying to get them all through our Welcome Center, which is right here, which is about 380 square feet, and so the development is meant to meet these capacity issues. And I'll yield back to Jeff Hatch.
Thank you.
Next slide, Brent. So, from the original concept plan, the World Center went through a fairly large envisioning process, which concluded with the modifications that we presented in 2019. And with that, we really formalized the, the structure of this expansion, making sure that we could expand both parking lot for increased visitation, as well as enlarging the Welcome Center for individuals, and really enhancing the educational components within the campus itself. And so we took a couple of the old, you know, aged muses that were displays for aviary exhibits, and, next slide. So, our, our Welcome Center expansion has some much-needed plumbing facilities, new upgraded restrooms, as well as a larger lobby space and means of entrance and exit into the facility, as well as some office and retail components. Next slide. So, here's a shot inside that proposed facility, the lobby space and the retail, and then looking out towards the campus. Next slide. We also wanted to enhance and also help tell the story of the success of the Peregrine Fund and the World Center for Birds of Prey, and so replacing one of those old muses with a, a large, much nicer exhibit celebrating the Peregrine Falcon, helping educate the general public on the success of really saving that species. Next slide. Another shot of that Peregrine Falcon exhibit. Next slide. One thing we are also enhancing with this is our access and safety for schoolchildren because they- because they do a range of different elementary school tours year-round, and so the secondary access provides much-needed circulation for the school programs that they provide. Next slide. With that, we have a smaller version of our outdoor flights area that Tate had presented a picture earlier. This one's within the campus itself and helps demonstrate things on a little bit more of a dense scale on a daily basis for the general public and serving a need that they've seen over the years. Next slide. We also have been working very closely with Idaho Power on this exhibit on Hawks, which actually has a couple of power poles within it that help demonstrate some of the science and technology, and the intent here is that, over time, if Idaho Power comes up with new technologies, we're able to install those and educate the general public on those sciences. Next slide. And so with that, we've been working pretty closely with the building department, and they have tallied up the permit costs for this. In the past, with other expansions to the condor propagation facility, on a case-by-case basis, this commission has allowed the discretion to waive fees, and so we did summarize an itemized list of what those fees would be, which is approximately $7,000. Next slide. And with that, the cost of $7,000 estimates about 500 classroom trips to this facility of 500 children, or about half of the annual food budget for the educational birds. And so we wanted to request both consideration for the board-level time extension, and really the justification of that is substantial progress. So we have done the classroom renovation. We've done all the septic system improvements provided for this expansion. We have our drainage permit approved by Ada County. We also have our building permits very close to wrapping up, and, you know, the concern is voiced by Brent about the sensitivity of the condors. And so with that, and the consideration of potentially waiving those fees, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. And how long did you want to have your time extension?
I think we can ask for up to two years. Is that correct?
Yes.
And ideally, this Phase 1 has the phase that we are currently doing, and there's also a second portion of the phase, which has to do with a grouping of owl exhibits, which would come online about a year from now. So we would request the full two-year extension for that purpose.
Two-year time extension. Okay, and you're requesting a fee waiver as well?
Yes.
Is that right? Is that a part of the application? I didn't see that.
Mr. Chairman, that is not a part of the application.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What's the amount of the fees that are asked to be waived? And Jeff, can you review with us again why you think that we should waive the fees?
Yeah, in the past, we've done a range of projects out there on the campus, and each time we've been involved, we've presented to this commission and requested that these fees be waived. We feel that this is a unique organization that serves the entire world out of Ada County, and to have funds from Ada County go back to this organization to help the economic development of Ada County is a trade-off, and so it's a discretionary request, but the last time we came in front of this commission, which obviously new commissioners can have their own discretion, but we were successful in our last request and wanted to present it at this opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is the request for fee waiver properly before the board? I guess we'll have to ask our attorney that.
Mr. Chairman, it's not properly before the board. It wasn't noticed. It wasn't on the public agenda. They can submit it, and it can be properly placed on an agenda, but it's not part of this application.
Okay. Well, that answers that question.
Welcome to come back with this.
You're welcome to make an application for that, but is there, is there any other testimony you'd like to make? Are there, is there anyone else in the room that would like to provide public comments?
There is someone online.
Does that wrap it up for you, sir? Okay. There's someone online?
Jane Matthews.
Jane Matthews?
Yes. Hello, Commissioners.
Hey, Jane, I'm going to tell you, we're going to have to start, you have three minutes.
I'm speaking in favor of the World Center for Birds of Prey. I've been a volunteer out there for 10 years. I'm a retired elementary teacher, so I know the high value of educational programs offered out there. We deal with about 5,000 students in a normal year, and they all benefit from learning about birds. The best thing is seeing a bird up close and in person. All teachers can use textbooks or even online videos, but I have the privilege of showing students live birds of prey held on my gloved arm. These are breathing, moving, sometimes squawking birds, four pounds, four ounces. You can watch a red-tailed hawk soar overhead and admire its flight, but these students can experience the eye blink, ruffled feathers, raised wings of a red tail held on my arm in front of the class. It's a pretty extraordinary experience for any student, and I sense their wonder as they discover the world of birds, and I hope they begin to appreciate the part that humans play in the underlying web of nature and survival of those birds. The Peregrine Fund's World Center for Birds of Prey plays an important role in nature education in this valley for all of our students, grades K through high school through, I've even done college-level vet tech prep classes. We have visitors from all over the country and the world. Your commission does well to support their work and help them to expand their presence at this very special place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, there is Heather Muleman, who's also signed up.
Heather?
Thank you so much. My name's Heather Muleman.
You can take your mask off if you want to.
Oh, what? I'm sorry.
You can take it off if you want to while you're providing testimony.
Even better.
So we can hear you.
So my name's Heather Muleman. I'm the Director of this capital expansion at the World Center for Birds of Prey. I'm an Idahoan. I grew up here in Boise, and I had the privilege of being in fourth grade when I first came to visit the center. It was a tremendous experience that I will never forget. It was before our education center existed, but we all got off of a bus, came out into a field, and someone with a raptor on their glove was standing in front of us. We didn't know what to expect, and all of a sudden, that raptor flew free, and all of us in that class still remember that experience today. I came onto this project a little over three years ago to do what I could to have my children have this kind of same experience that I had as a fourth grader. So I know that this is such an important rite of passage for so many kids in Ada County, and we really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now. Oh, you have some?
Mr. Chairman, before you close the public hearing, we need to enter Mr. Hatch's and Mr. Mason's presentation to the record, and so that presentation will be exhibit number 20.
Okay, that will be, that will be on the record, and with that, we will close the public hearing. Is there a discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the folks here that testified tonight. This is quite an asset, not only for our local community, but like they said, worldwide, a lot of folks are very familiar with this project and having falcons nest and fly around in a downtown urban area the size of city Boise is pretty phenomenal. So I'm really excited to have the amenities out there, and I think because of COVID and the reasons given tonight in testimony, they're making progress, but things are a little bit slower, and we've seen a lot of that this past year with COVID. So with that, I'll be willing to and ready to make a motion if Commissioner Davidson is ready.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty non-controversial motion, and it's recommended approval by staff, so I appreciate the slideshow. I think it might have been a little bit of overkill, though, so.
I enjoyed it. With that, I'll make a motion to approve a board-level time extension for an administrative modification for conditional use on 2008-00175-CU-M-TE, and this will be a two-year extension.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second to grant a two-year time extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we move on to take up some unfinished business. May I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Been moving seconded to move the, remove the unfinished business from the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The item was tabled from April 14th public hearing. The board elected to leave the public hearing open to consider testimony as it specifically pertains to potential mitigation measures, including but not limited to establishing a 250-foot setback from south-north property lines, closing at 6:00 PM, building a six-and-a-half foot berm, turning lights off at excluding safety lighting, limiting building square footages, restricting installation of blacktop. Those were items for discussion, and so I would like to admonish each applicant that those are what are the items we're discussing tonight, and that's what we delayed the public hearing for. Now, we have chosen to give the appellantants, that would be the people who appealed the original decision of planning and zoning, there's two of them, 10 minutes each, and then we are granting the original applicant for the winery 10 minutes. Now, I understand there's a number of people that have also signed up to provide public testimony. We'll give the, see, that takes up 30 minutes, and we're going to strictly adhere to that, too, by the way, the 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes. And then we're going to ask that anybody that, if you've signed up and you didn't call us in advance, we need to have the names so that we can, we can proceed in the order. If we can get the names, we can proceed in that order, and then we'll take your testimony in the order that we've, that we've received it. Okay? Is that?
Three minutes? What are you going to give the individuals?
Well, we've stuck with three minutes, and I would admonish you to not repeat if you've heard something before, kind of to keep it to what's not been repeated, so that we can, we can, we can get through this, because we all want to have the best, the best possible outcome. All right, we will open up the public hearing on, on application 202-00273A, Keith Hill and John Fiorina. You can choose yourself which one comes first.
Mr. Chairman, we
Yes.
We did, we did have some background information that staff was prepared to provide the board if you were interested.
Okay, that'd be fine. We'll do, well, I'm sorry, I apologize. We'll do the background information first then.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is an appeal of the planning and zoning approval of a conditional use master site plan for the expansion of an existing winery. So on January 14th, P&amp;Z approved the conditional use master site plan for the expansion, expansion of the existing winery that was originally approved on May 9th, 2019. The board heard the application at their April 14th hearing, and they tabled it until tonight. There were certain things that you wanted to talk about, the items that you had already talked, brought into the record. So we do have some follow-up information. The property does have agricultural exemption. They have had dry grazing for many years, but it was updated this year from the Ada County assessors. It is now looked at with irrigated agriculture. We also looked into the hours of operation for other wineries. That was one of the questions you had at the last hearing. So we did look at the Idaho Wine Commission. They have a brochure that's available on their website. We looked at the wineries in the area for the Eagle American Venticulture area, and we looked at, there's 17 of those. They don't have the hours listed on the commission website, so we did look into some of those wineries. Basically, they, they run from 6:00 PM up until 8:00 PM. The 8:00 PM is more in the urban areas.
Is that for tasting rooms or for the winery operation itself?
Mr. Chairman, that is for the tasting rooms.
So there, you haven't found any limitations on the actual operation of the winery?
We haven't looked specifically at all of the production areas, because most of the wineries do have a production area. So this is the property site. We did look at, put an overlay of the proposed buildings and the existing buildings and the distances. So Mr. Hill's property is located right here.
And so it's a little, it touches the, the Bucat's property about 100 feet there?
It does.
And that's it, about 100 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is Mr. Ferioni's property. He's the closest. So we did look at, this is where they are proposing the new production area with the parking over in this area. This is the new tasting room with the patios. Their existing structure is located at this location.
Where? Can you show us again? I'm not seeing your pointer. Where's existing? Right there? Okay.
Right there. Their parking is directly to the south of their existing, and then their residence is over here. This, located right here, is the gas line, and then they have their vineyards shown on this, and their material storage is towards the north property line. So we did look at the distance to, from Mr. Ferioni's home, it's about 75 feet to the property line. The barn is about 70 feet from the property line, and again, like I said, Mr. Hill does not have any structures. It's a vacant piece of property. So here are some pictures that
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could you go back to the previous slide? So looking at the new proposed tasting room patio, that is 75 feet from their property line?
So there are different, there's a main patio and a small patio. The small patio is 30 feet to the property line, and then the main patio, which is the larger, is 80 feet, and then the tasting, sorry, tasting room is 125. Their storage is
Now, that's 125 feet from the property line?
From the property line.
And the, the house, is that the one in the front, or is that the barn?
This is the house, right?
No, Fiorino's property.
I'm talking about Fiorino's.
His house is, where you see the green?
Right.
That is his house.
And how far is that from the property line?
His house is approximately 75 feet.
So that's about how many feet between the two of them?
If you add the small patio, it's probably about 105 feet.
Okay.
And, and then the, so there's two, there's one large production storage, the 4,000, or the 10,000 square foot one, that's there. So where are the two separate 4,000 square feet, square foot structures?
Okay, I guess I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Well, there's, there's a proposal for a 10,000 square foot structure, production facility, a 4,000 equipment storage facility, another 4 facility, a four thousand equipment storage facility, another four thousand, four thousand material storage facility, and then the three thousand wine tasting room.
Okay, so this structure right here is the production facility?
How far is that off Highway sixteen there?
I think we may have to have the applicant say that.
Oh, okay.
I think it, yeah, I think we want the applicant to show. They will have to meet a fifty-foot setback along Highway sixteen per the Ada County Code.
Sure.
So are you saying that, that those three buildings are in that complex or all together there?
There are three, several structures. They have the storage, one of the storages is to the south of the production, and then there is one a little bit to the east in this red area right here.
And then the materials, one is up on top there?
Correct.
And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, one for the question-
Yes, go ahead.
Before we move the slide. So the berm that's been built, can you show us on this map where that berm is? And the, the trees aren't planted yet, but the berm goes from where to where?
They have put a berm right along this area. They had worked previously with Mr. Farione on the berm. So I do have, this picture here shows that they put a six-foot berm along the property.
Which, this is from the, the winery side of the berm?
It is.
Okay.
So that's his, his trees, Mr. Fiorino's trees?
Correct.
And then, does his, does the property slope down then? That's what we're seeing on this next slide?
Yeah, this is actually sloping down on the winery property.
Oh, sloping down to the winery property from there? Okay.
But there are some of the elevations. There, the Farione's property with the existing berm is what this picture shows, but the elevation of his structures, or the property, I'm sorry, is twenty-seven sixty. The tasting room with the patio is twenty-seven seventy. So it's just above the elevation from where Mr. Farione's home is located.
Can they, can they see it? Will they be able to see it from their home through the berm? Do they have to go look over the berm?
I don't know that, that the berm is gonna cover all of it, but with the landscaping and the trees, they should be able to hide that. The elevation of the production facility is twenty-six seventy feet, so it's about a hundred feet lower than any of the other properties.
Do you have anything else for us?
I was just gonna show that they do have their winery, and they are showing in this area where the gas line comes through.
You mean, that, that's the grapes, right?
The grapes are right here.
Yeah, right there.
Yes, correct. And it does show it right here, coming up over the hill.
And the, and the, the gas line goes from the yellow marker to the, where the arrow is?
Yeah, it, it shows how that gas line goes across their property.
Do you have an aerial view of that? Because this doesn't tell me anything.
Is it, is it linear from there?
If we go back here, this is the gas line.
Okay, so from there goes, it runs all across their property?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Transverses.
Can you hit me up?
So there were some proposals by the appellantants. They wanted the buildings moved to the northwest end of the property. These are Mr. Farione's recommendations, and that the maintenance road be moved to the area south of the current, current parking.
So this shows, I'm sorry, can you go back, please?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If I may, so this shows that the, the new production plant would right, be right in the middle of the vineyard that's already planted? Yeah, right where your arrow is?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I do believe that they do have some grapes in this area. We could verify that with the applicant, with the original applicant, sorry.
And then Highway sixteen is over here?
Is along, right here.
Okay, so where, so the production facility, is that the production facility?
Currently, their production facility, where they're proposing it, is on this side.
Okay, so I'm not sure what difference that would make. Okay, thank you.
So these are some of the, the changes that, that Mr. Hill had proposed. Again, they wanted him to move the structures to the northern side of the property, and they wanted to move the access road away from the property line. From what I understand, the access road is for their agricultural use for the, the vineyard, not for public use. They wanted their hours to be truncated from ten P. M. to six P. M., with promotional events authorized until eight. All music events be ticketed and limited to thirty people. There are existing, in the conditions of approval, that planning and zoning approved, they do limit the number of events that are dealt with the winery and the tasting room. And there's specific language in our code as to how they need to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Diana, on this note, you mentioned in one of the reports that they need to apply for a social hall application?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, we have had a pre-application meeting with the Burchards, and they are proposing an event center. That would require a new conditional use master site plan and meet our code section for an event center.
Which is different how from a social hall that you-
Well, it, it, it is a social hall. An event center and a social hall is, is kind of, the newer language saying an event center, social hall is what we call it in the code, but there is specific language for that.
So, and, okay, so your recommendations would be an event center application?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, they could apply for it. I believe that they are in the process. They have gotten their neighborhood meeting list from the county, so I think they have worked on that application.
But that was not one, that was not one of your conditions in the original approval of-
That is correct. So what we're looking at is just the appeal-
Right.
And the conditions from the planning and zoning, or any additional conditions.
Right. Okay. Is there, is there any further questions from, yeah?
No, but I may wanna ask you something later.
We may.
Don't run off, Diane.
We may. Lot to consider here.
So there are several options that you have. You can deny the appeal and uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval. You can deny the appeal and modify the conditions of approval, or you can uphold the appeal and deny the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval.
Okay. I thank you. Unless there's any more questions of our staff, I will ask either Mr. Hill or Mr. Fiorino to, if you'd like to testify. And you have ten minutes.
My name is John Fiorino, and I live at eighty-six hundred West High Ridge Lane. My wife, Chris, and I own the property, sharing the property line with Dewald Sellers, so we're directly south. And our front door is approximately a hundred feet from the property line. I think that was one of the questions one of the commissioners had. I'm gonna use much less than my ten minutes, but I do wanna answer some, some of the questions that were asked during the original staff presentation. One of the questions was regarding, can we see the activities from our house? Well, we have a deck that is on the east side of our house where we entertain. And the Bucherts did put in the berm, and that was great, we appreciate that. But when we sit on our deck, we can look straight out over the berm and see all the activities taking place. We can hear the music, we can hear the people talking, and we can physically see them.
We saw a string of trees. Do you see through the trees? Is that it?
Pardon?
We saw a string of trees on the property line.
Yes, and the trees had to be trimmed up, but because the fire department, because of the, a severe fire that was had, that we had to trim the trees up, so we look underneath the trees.
So you, you look underneath the trees? Because they look like a pretty thick-
Yeah, they're tall trees, but we had to raise them four, I think it was four foot was the, what the fire department asked.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask staff to put the aerial view on for reference while we're hearing the testimony, unless you had your own slides?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't prepare slides for this. So what I'd like to do is now just go into a, a part of the presentation I think is pertinent to the discussion tonight, and that is, towards the end of the January fourth meeting with the planning and zoning, Commissioner Booker asked, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kuyo asked-
We're limiting the discussion to the items that, that I-
Well, this applies to one of the items. That Commissioner Kuyo asked the following question, Mr. Booker, regarding the expansion. He asked, and this is a direct quote, "The more we talked about this move, more we seen that the, like it's deja vu all over again. Some question, same question, same comments, only this time it's now times two." And so I just want to ask on the record, do you have any plans to expand beyond this expansion you brought to us tonight? Mr. Booker's reply, "On the record, we do not." Well, the expansion is continuing. You heard that, just relative to the social hall and event center. So now, based on conflicting messages by the Development Services staff regarding what constitutes an event, the Bucherts have requested an expansion of their conditional use to social hall event center. We feel Development Services staff should clearly define what constitutes an event versus a casual celebration, because that's, that's what was used to go for the next social hall request. The homeowners of the Kling Estates all live well within one thousand feet of the Dewald Sellers. No one else is impacted like the Kling Estates homeowners.
I'm gonna ask you to stick to the six items that we, that we mentioned.
Okay.
The two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, the closing hours, the building along of the berm, the turning lights on and off, limiting the square footage of the building, and restricting installation of back, the blacktop. That's what this hearing is about.
Yes, but this, this, this is part of that. This, this says, and again, I'm gonna spend much less than ten minutes. So what I'm telling you is that this is having a significant impact on the Kling Estate homeowners, and no one else feels that. There are some interesting letters supporting the winery. None of them are even close to the winery. We are the closest development to the winery, and therefore, they do not feel the impact. I wonder if they would feel the same if they had this winery and they, would now will be an event center in their front yard. And in fact, I would ask you as commissioners, how would you feel if this was in your front yard, a hundred feet from your front yard?
Does this relate to the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback then?
Yes, it does. So on the April twelfth meeting, Commissioner Kenyon put forth an, an alternative proposal to what we had proposed, relative to moving everything to the north side of the property. After much consideration, we informed V. O. A. C. C. that Commissioner Kenyon's proposal would be a good compromise, and we would accept her proposal as written. We respectfully request the Commissioners Beck and Davidson vote in favor of Commissioner Kenyon's proposal. And I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak. So it was well within my ten minutes.
Yes, you were. Thank you very much. Well within your ten minutes. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for me?
I did have a question that was brought up during the discuss- Do you sell wine?
I'm a distributor, yes.
You're a distributor for wine? Okay. Do you get your wine out of state, or do you buy it locally? Or I'm just, just, just curious.
Both.
Both, okay.
But so, but so do the Bucherts. They buy from outside of the state as well.
Of course. Well, they wanna buy, they wanna buy grapes, from what I understand, and produce it.
Yeah, buy it from Washington, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Fiorino, so I'm curious, on your patio or your deck?
Yes.
Patio?
Mm-hmm.
That you said it's, you can see, does the berm, is your deck outside that berm area? Does the berm need to be expanded, or what would be the solution?
Well, we've had that discussion with the Bucherts, and they said that they would make every attempt to raise the berm and then put additional trees on top of it. But right now, we can actually see the events being taken place.
But do you feel, do you feel comfortable or confident that you can work with them on getting the, getting your-
They seem to be open to raising the berm, yes.
Okay.
How high would it have to be raised?
Two feet.
Two feet more?
Yeah. And not the whole length, but just one section.
Just that one section.
Yeah, just that one section.
And of course, didn't they say they were going to landscape it and stuff to further?
Right. And I asked if they put the trees on the top to add additional coverage.
To take up the space that, where you've had to trim your trees.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Does Mr. Davidson have a question?
Yeah, have you had any conversations with the Bucherts since the last hearing?
Yes, we've had at least three that I can recall. The most recent was last night.
Okay.
Were those productive?
I think for the most part, they were. There's still a open question relative to the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure then, that you don't have issues with any of the other items that were open for tonight's discussion?
Uh, the, the time, the, the, the time of the tasting room, yes, we have an issue with that. We'd like to see it brought back from ten o'clock.
Two.
To eight would be, we feel appropriate, because that's basically what everybody else is doing.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Okay.
That's six to eight, the evening somewhere in there.
Right, right. Okay. Is there any other question for Mr. Fiorino?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So just to sort of nail it down, you're primarily being affected because of the proximity to the tasting room patio, so it's being able to see it, being able to hear it?
Hear, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we can actually hear the conversations on the patio they have right now, and that is up by their house. So if it moves closer to ours, we're gonna be able to just sit there and just join the conversation, I guess.
Might be kinda fun from time to time.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe you could bring some of your wine over.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Would the, would the two feet ameliorate that? The two feet in, in-
As far as us seeing, yes, it would.
Yeah, well, and hearing as well, because that was how much of a sound barrier-
Well, you never really get rid of all the hearing. I think it would help.
Okay. I thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
First, I'm at a slight disadvantage because I didn't know that it would be ten minutes, so I prepared for less, but-
Well, you can take less.
I will. I'll address those specific things that you have, but I'm gonna start with, there were submissions in the month in between, and the Bucherts have a fourteen-page submission. The issue of counting the events has really come off the rails. Staff Sanders has advised them that if two people are celebrating a birthday, that constitutes an event and would trigger the use of one of their twenty-four. I'm having trouble understanding that. And Mrs. Booker said, "Most of the time, we're not even aware of people celebrating anything until they come in." So how would we know how to count those? I think the twenty-four events are very simple. They have to identify and notify you all that those are the twenty-four events. That's already in the existing conditions that was passed. I heard your admonishment. I don't know- I don't know if you'll admonish me more or not. But a social hall status flies in the face of the CUP for the wineries. Wineries are limited to wine tasting events, winemaker dinners. There are specific things listed that they're allowed to do with the conditional use of a winery. There are specific things identified in the code that they cannot do, weddings being one of them. If they get the social hall designation, now you've got a winery that's doing an unlimited number of events. Oh, they want to know where I've been. Well, there's a little thing called COVID, so I didn't get on an airplane and come here, but now I am. I've spent a pretty significant amount of money, and if I told you how much, you'd be shocked, in planning a well and a home on that property. It's a dream of ours. Oh. Commissioner Kenyon, you said no blacktop to the Bucherts. In their filing, they now say, "Well, what about recycled asphalt?" Last time I looked, that looks like blacktop. Screening from parking and events, and now they claim that that is my burden and that I said that I'd carry that burden. Never said such. They have mischaracterized me in their filing, their 14-page item. I don't know where that came from. The production hours is a huge concern. Originally, until we met last time, they had only planted three acres. Since our last meeting, they have been very industrious. They planted more, they put those berms in. I don't know if they have permits to do that kind of stuff. I don't know if they need permits to do that kind of stuff. Now, Trey Buchert says they can only plant nine acres of this specially designed AVA land. Okay? So nine acres, and we're going to build, and the production facility that you identified is 10,000 square feet, thanks to staff, the actual size of it is 12,800 feet. Check your records on that one, because if you take the length and width, you'll find that their filing didn't match what they said it was. Fellow by the name of Bob Wright weighed in and he said, "A common crush facility to be used to accommodate 100 acres of grape production from Three Horse Winery in Dude DeWalt." Now, that's what we're talking about there. They'll buy grapes from other places, they'll rent out the facility unless you prevent them from doing so. And if you don't, what we will have as neighbors right there will be a factory of noise, dust, sound, lights, farm equipment, 24/7, 365, up to and including Christmas Day. Happy holidays. Make them close at 6:00. I don't think it's prudent, wise, thoughtful to take folks with elevated blood alcohol content after sunset and release them on Highway 16. Let's sunset their operation at 6:00 p.m., not after sunset. Mrs. Buchert talks about taking, almost in a threatening manner to you three. A setback is not taking. They would still own the land, and they can still do the one thing a winery should do, and that's comply with 3.3A agriculture. Plant the setbacks in vineyard, no harm. This isn't an Emmett domain where they take the land and build a road. This is a setback. Their farmers grow grapes in the setback. The one thing they want to do with three acres of growing vineyard is put up 9,000 square feet of facility. They've almost got as much building as they have vineyard. The setbacks will not pierce the veil of the statutes of the Right to Farm Act, because they will still be able to farm the setback area. The setback is only a setback of building. By the way, right now, I'd identify that I have no interest in setbacks of the other three borders. I don't feel I have standing to say that it should be setback from the north and from Highway 16 and from the east. But I do feel that I have real discreet right and standing to say that the 250-foot setback is at a minimum sensible and thoughtful. They accuse us in that 14-page letter of a lot of spin. Their Exhibit C, the berm building job proposal, is a fabricated submission. They own premier aggregates, and this is a made-up invoice. No man-hours, no cubic yards, just a hyperbolic unit price.
I'm sorry, you lost me. I have no idea what you're talking about right now.
Exhibit C says the berm costs $190,000. They own the berm building company. If that invoice is real, they take $190,000 from their left pocket and put it in their right pocket. It's a spin on you folks. They say they don't make noise, they do. They say they don't exceed the capacity limits, they do. Then they talk about property value. All of our properties, all of us, everybody in here, all of our property has gone up in the last two years, but not because we're next to a winery. Without reasonable restrictions, the 250-foot setback, the 6:00 p.m. sunset, head-counted events, not an unrestricted number of events, and no to a social hall, my property will be permanently and irreparably harmed. The value will go down. I deserve quality of life. Add these sensible restrictions. I did it in eight minutes.
Thank you. Is there questions?
Sure.
I know a lot about this map.
Can you tell me on your property, can we see the entire property? Is that possible? So tell me on your property where you're permitted for your home and your well.
Well, I can build anywhere on it, given the individual setbacks. I'll tell you. You want me to get my mask and walk over on point?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Just curious where you're, and have you applied for a permit?
Have not applied for a permit yet. We're talking to the well drillers, talked to a construction guy. We're going to go out, get all that done.
But you haven't yet?
Have not done it, no.
Okay.
But I'm here to do it.
And how long have you owned the property?
Two years, two months, three days.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead and just point for me where you're planned on building.
All right.
We can't see that.
We can't see it from him.
Maybe he could go to the computer, the staff computer.
Go to the staff. Step away, I'll put the mouse on. There is a fire break right here. There's a circle, see that circle right there? That is the highest point, it would be right there.
So approximately how many feet is that to the property line?
To the, I'd be guessing. They say it's 900 feet to their deal, but I think it's more like, as the crow flies, I'm going to say 250 myself, 250.
You're about 100 foot from the Fiorino's barn, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd.
150 anyway, maybe 200, 150 maybe.
Yeah.
And you're probably 600 or 800 to the.
I will tell you that they currently, and it's, if we can go back to their plan, they park cars, they had been parking right up against the property line. Now, next to their home, and yeah, two points. That little stub between vineyard and the proposed tasting room, they park cars. They are clearly visible. I mean, it's just plain as day. I was at the property yesterday. And here's something that's really important. That tasting room as proposed, their original conditional use, two years earlier, that was planted as vineyard. We're going to plant vineyard. If they had planted the original vineyard they applied for and was approved, they'd be tearing it up to put that tasting room and patio in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, since I left a minute on the table, I think you're going to hear a parade of solicited folks come in here and say how wonderful wineries are. We have no trouble with wineries. We're the neighbors, we know what happens.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing for the record. Mr. Hill, sorry. So you mentioned that you feel like this would, your value of your property would.
It would absolutely go down.
Okay, do you have proof of that? Did you hire a real estate person or?
You know what's interesting, and of course you have Mr. Hudson's testimony. Paul Hudson owns the property just south of me. There are four Kling homeowners, Paul Hudson, Paul Hazen, myself, and Mr. Fiorino. And Paul Hudson is a Realtor Emeritus. He has been in the realty business literally for 48 years, and he has assured me that if, without the restrictions, without the 250-foot setback, the 6:00 p.m., and some other things to mitigate noise and activity, sound, smells, dust, et cetera, the issue would be that I'd never be able to retrieve the same value of the home. It would go down. And that's.
Well, I want one more question. Based on where you said you wanted to build your house, looks like you want to be about a quarter of a mile, because you're about 1,000 feet, and you'd like another 250 feet beyond there. Like, that's more than 250 what you have on the, that's where they're planning on building it now. You want an additional, you want to move way back, want them to move their production facility about another 500, 600 feet, correct?
Well, here's the thing with the production facility, that, and it's down, I believe it will not be completely obscured. I was very happy when Commissioner Kenyon said, gee, you know, we'll sunset that at 6:00 p.m. and we'll have lights that would only be motion-activated after that by personnel, et cetera. Now, in fairness, I think that the Bucherts will be able to claim that stopping production at 6:00 p.m. will be a real burden to them, because when they have to, and I have a nice letter to you all saying that, look, I recognize that it's a 24/7 operation when they're in production. My concern about the production facility is lights and sound. Ideally, if this was mine to design, and I did include in my original submission, they've got all that space. We're local homeowners, 3.3C and D, let's protect the local home. They can go north of that pipeline. They continually say they can't build north of the pipeline. That's specious and fallacious in every way, because they've got a 10,000, I'm sorry, 4,000 square foot materials handling building north of the pipeline. They can build their production facility up there. Mr. Fiorino's original proposal was it be up there? The tasting room, they've got an existing tasting room. It's too close for comfort for us because.
Mr. Hill, you've already taken up your time for testimony, so.
Thank you, sir.
You answered our questions, thank you.
Listen, does anybody else have any question for Mr. Hill?
Not at this time, but we may help folks back up.
Okay. Okay, now, Bucherts, are your, you can take, you can split your 10 minutes up between, if you'd like.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and start here. Commissioners.
Thank you.
My name is Trey Buchert, and my family and I own Dude DeWalt Sellers. This is my wife, Joanna, and I have two sons, Lane and Evan. Lane is actually back in the back right now. So, anyway, what I would like to do here is talk a little bit about, just real briefly, on what we propose. And we've spent some time, as Mr. Fiorino suggested, in conversations with them the last few days. So here's what I would like to propose. First of all, we want to mitigate the impact to their home. They're the closest to us, they've lived there the longest, so we really want to address their concerns. I know they're concerned about the sound, the lights, seeing people, you know, next to us and the cars that are parking out in the parking lot. So what we have done, we have built a berm, as was discussed earlier. It's about six feet tall, about 200 feet long, and we spent about $20,000 in doing that. And we haven't even got landscaping or irrigation installed yet. So in addition to that, with our discussions with the Fiorinos, what we'd like to do is we want to landscape the berm, and Fiorinos have pointed, have given us input on that. So we want to do that. So we're going to get that done. Additionally, we, at the east end of the berm, next to their house, we've agreed to make attempts to raise it about two feet and heavily landscape that part of the berm. So, for about 50 feet or so. On the west end, they requested that we extend it about 50 feet, so it would go down, they wouldn't see cars and lights coming up their driveway. We've agreed to make some attempts to do that, either with more dirt or heavy landscaping. So there's an additional thing that we would do. In addition, what we're willing to do here on this is not build the tasting room or patio area within 100 feet of the property line. So basically, about 100 feet setback between us and them. So that would help mitigate the impact and noise and all these issues that we're dealing with.
Excuse me, how far is it right now, based on the drawings that are up there?
Probably about 30 feet to the patio and somewhere around 100 to the tasting room.
So you're asking, you're proposing an additional 70 feet?
For the patio, to keep people away from their property.
And that's something that you've just proposed, because it's not on your.
Yeah, we talked to the Fiorinos about that last night or this morning when we talked last.
Okay.
And I wouldn't say they necessarily agreed, but we proposed that to them.
Sure, but I'm glad you're talking.
So in exchange for doing this here, we're asking the county to agree to no additional conditions, other than the original 40 approved on this originally during the original P&amp;Z hearing. And to drop, also, we want to drop the requirement for the self-reporting on the events. It's, we just feel it's an infringement on, you know, having to report everything we do. So if we can get that done, we're willing to do these things here and work with the Fiorinos. So those are my comments on a proposal that I'd like to be considered right now. So, Joanna?
Okay. You know, I really don't have anything to add to that. I think that we're working toward a resolution. I think it's fair, equitable, and we're understanding the issues that the Fiorinos are having. We're willing to work with them, and I think it's a good resolution. I think as far as limiting production hours, that is difficult for us, because we do bring in grapes from other areas. They have to be produced and have to be taken care of that day to be good quality wine. You don't want the grapes to sit around, so all of that needs to be done that day if possible. So that requires sometimes during harvest, and harvest runs from September to October. We usually bring whites in in September, and October is when you see the reds. But after that period of time, pretty much everything in the production end of this is inside the winery. There might be some occasional washing of barrels, there might be, you know, we have to gas barrels, we have to take care of them. But most of the production work, you know, is really not outside the winery, with the exception of September and October. So we do, we will have people working late, you know, at those, at times inside the winery, but that shouldn't, we don't feel that that should bother Mr. Hill. And I don't think the Fiorinos can even see the production facility from their house, from where we're planning on putting it. Also, I suppose I should say that up where it says the material storage area, as you see on the map, on the very part, north part of the property, if you look at where they wanted to have us move the production facility, which would be on the northwest, northwest portion of the property, that is a hilly area. So for us to actually make a production facility there would require immense amount of earth moving equipment, and it's not suitable. So it's just a topography issue, it's not, you know, really a suitable location for it. And also, Diana had had reference to whether or not we actually did have vineyard in that upper right-hand corner. We do have vineyard north of the property. There is no vineyard north of the pipeline at this point, so I should just clarify that as well for you. Anything else?
Well, the only other thing, I know you guys had some questions here just a minute ago, like on the distance from Mr. Hill's property up to our place here. We're roughly, Mr. Hill. We're roughly, they, Mr. Hill has roughly 200 feet of property that borders our property down by Highway 16. The distance from the proposed home to the production facility is roughly 900 feet away. And right now, we're about 800 feet to our current tasting room. So it's quite some distance from where his proposed home is.
So from your property line to the, where you're proposing your production facility is 900 feet, you say?
No, that's up to our current tasting room, up on the hill.
That's the tasting...
We're a little closer than that from the property line over to the proposed production facility. It's around 600 feet, somewhere in there.
Also, I guess I just mentioned that we do have 7.6 acres now in planting. It's all done, you know, that much of it. We do really only have nine acres of planting area. And from a standpoint of agriculture, I don't know how much you guys all know about agriculture, but you can't just plant grapes, plant grapes anywhere. They, we have frost in Idaho. And the lower areas where we've got the production facility, you can't plant grapes. It is too cold. There is a 10-degree difference, in fact, from the top of our property to the lower part of our property. And we can't grow grapes there. They will freeze.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but looking at the map where it says vineyard and off to our left, the pink, that's your production facility, correct?
Correct.
And you're saying from the property line to the edge of that production facility is only 600 feet? It seems to me it's a lot farther than that, just based on the scale up there.
It's, in the ballpark, it might be a little bit further than that. It might be 700 feet there.
Okay.
I don't have an exact figure on that from the property line to that facility.
What is just, if you were to move your production facility farther up the map there, what is just, and I don't even want, is it north? Is that north, if you...
North.
If you were to move that up, say, 50 feet, what is, what is there that would...
There's probably a little flexibility there to go a few feet. We start getting back into hilly, hilly area there.
But what's the, but how far could you move it without being an overburdened some area?
I would say to go probably in the neighborhood of another 100, 100 feet, maybe.
Wouldn't hurt anything for you, from your perspective, in terms of the topography?
Probably not. Need to get out there and take a look at it, but we could move it a little bit further.
Because that seemed to be Mr. Hill's objection, is a little too close. But, anyway.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So outside of September and October, what does production entail? Are you importing grapes and then putting them in the facility? Or what goes on outside those months?
So between the months of October and, September and October, that's the only time of the year that we bring grapes in. So that would be the only time that we have trucks coming in to bring grapes into the facility. The only other trucks that we might see in the future, and we're so, so small at this point that we haven't started distributing, should we start distributing or use a distributor, trucks of that nature would be coming in to pick up wine to distribute, and likely that is just during regular business hours. So that would be the only time you would see, you know, major trucks. Between that, I mean, maybe the occasional purchase of some barrels. There's just not a lot of, a lot of activity going on at the winery during the rest of the year.
So when do you harvest your own grapes?
Both September and October. Mostly October, depends on the, on the ripening season for us. If it's a good year, we'll be in October.
So in October, you're harvesting your own from your vineyard and then also bringing some in to the facility?
Yes. We lease other people's vineyards in the area, and we bring some in from Washington State as well.
So the concern from Mr. Hill was that you could potentially become a 365-day-a-year production facility. How would you respond to that?
It's not our plan to do that. The Three Horse Ranch facility that is northern, north up towards Chaparral, and it's actually not in this county, it's in Gem County, they have made a production facility, and that is their program. That's not our program. Our program is to take care of our grapes, our wines, and direct to consumer or in really restaurants. And online.
But Jonna, even so, even if we were a custom crush facility, you still only harvest grapes in September and October, and that's it. And after that, everything goes indoors. There's very, you might clean barrels during the daytime outside or something like that, you know, and wash some equipment down, but everything goes indoors. No matter how big you are, you got one time of the year where you're actually busy and doing it.
September and October, and that depends on the weather. You said this year's going to be October.
And also, I've never seen any smoke billowing out of a smoke stack on a winery before.
Yes, yeah.
How much, how much noise, when you're all indoors, can you hear from the outside?
What can you hear from the outside?
Yeah.
You can hear a crush...
When it's indoors.
Oh, when it's indoors?
When it's indoors.
Yeah.
Very little.
Maybe an air conditioner running or something, or a chiller? That'd be about it. You know, for steam cleaning, some, some equipment outside, maybe you could hear the pressure washer, but you know, it's pretty, pretty minor.
Another question, on your production facility there, if you can move it 100 feet to the north, how, where would trucks come in to deliver your grapes if you're going to get them from Washington?
Yeah. It, they would still come in off the highway at the same spot.
Where would that be?
We would have to reroute the road around the building a little bit, up into the hill a little bit more. So it would take a little bit more dirt work to make that work. We're in the flat area at the bottom right now.
Flat area in the bottom right now, but you could kind of move it around a little bit if...
We've got a little, little flexibility there, yeah.
And, and, and would you bring your, would the trucks come in from the north then, off Highway 16?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't, do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So talk to me about the tasting room times. One of the things that our staff went through was the difference between the typical times that wine tasting rooms close downtown Boise, Garden City, the urban ones, versus in a vineyard, in a rural setting. And most of those tend to be around 6:00 or 7:00 PM. But you're requesting, and tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong, we looked at all of them. So explain to me why you feel that you need to be open until 10 o'clock at night for a wine tasting room in a vineyard?
Sure. So just to explain a little bit, when we started, it was not our intent to have food. We offer a charcuterie plate, a bread and olive oil plate, and some skewers. That's it. And that's today, that's all we offer. But when COVID hit, and we were ready to open on May 16th last year, they, the county central district health said, you can't open unless you have some food. So I'd had these three little items that I thought, okay, well, we'll bring these out and we'll be able to open. And so they allowed us to open, and we started with curb-side delivery and pickup service. So, and we delivered, and that's how we began. We didn't even have a grand opening. So what happened was that as these people were coming to the facility, they were enjoying charcuterie. One of the things that, when I go to a winery, one of the things I don't like about wineries is that they don't offer a little bit of food, because when I'm tasting wine, I'm a little lightheaded. I want to have some food in my stomach. So we started offering this. People liked it. Now we've got clientele that come in at 6:00 for a glass of wine, and that's their dinner. If we close out at 6:00, or we'd have to really start closing out people at 5:00 so they can be done at 6:00, and then we will not be having any of those people who wanted to come after hours. We were also asked by a lot of young people when we started, have this open later. We all work till 5:00. We can't get out there till 5:15, 5:30. Please open up later. So we listened to those people, and we did, and now we have quite a following of people that do that. So why would we need to be open to 10? That's, that's a big deal.
Year-round, too?
Year, year-round, yes. Because in the summertime, of course, it doesn't really, we don't have sunsets at 6:00 or 8:00. They're much later. They're like 9:30, 10:00. And that is one of the draws to the winery. But, where was I going with that?
Well, why, because by the time we start closing down around 8, it takes a while to...
Right, to get staff out and to get, you know, we have to clean up. We have to put things away. We have to wash all the glasses. So by the time that we get staff out of there, it's 9, 9:30 sometimes. And I just don't want people calling and saying, you know, oh, you still have people at the winery. You know, it's not, it's not appropriate. If we leave it at 10, it's not our intent to be open till 10, but that gives us time to get people out. We've even started doing a last call at 7:45 now so that we can get our staff people home earlier because they have had to hang out because, if you come out, you guys will see. You'll have a glass of wine, and you won't want to leave. And so it does, you know, it's rude to tell your clients, I'm sorry, but, you know, we're closing. Usually we'll say, all right, we'll clean up, we're cleaning up, last call is 7:45, and that's what we do.
So it sounds like you're not a typical wine tasting facility. You've turned into the, the local place to come and eat and have a couple of drinks and hang out there. Which is different than people going wine tasting, right?
It's morphed into something else.
So let me ask you something. Will your, are you planning on applying for the event center permit? And will that change the self-reporting that you, or the reporting that you need to do right now that you were asking us to waive?
It should, because one of the things, based on what we, let me explain again. We've heard no less than three different definitions from different people on what is an event and what's considered as an event. When we came to see you, an event was defined as, you know, to us, as something that was ticketed and something we advertised. After last, the last hearing, the definition was told to us that, hey, it's anything that is considered a social gathering is considered an event and triggers one of those 24 events. I don't care if it's three people, four people, 10 people, you know, that's considered an event. And then, most recently, we heard that another definition offered was that if you were inviting people to the winery, then that's considered an event. And maybe that means you put an ad that says, we've got a musician coming, come have a, have a winery. Or we have a food trick tonight. That would be more in the line of an invitation to have other people come. So the definition of an event is all over the board within planning and zoning itself. Given the one that we were told, I mean, I, we, we have two or three small events every single day because people are coming to celebrate anniversaries, birthdays, proposals. I mean, and people are just coming out there to celebrate. It's not really what I would have considered an event. And that's why when you asked Commissioner Beck how many events we'd actually had, I went to wine maker dinners, which we didn't have, and our wine club pickups, because that's what our condition of approval said clearly was an event. So I wasn't trying to be deceptive or in any way, you know, that was what our understanding of an event was. So...
Just for the record, that's Commissioner Davidson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Davidson. I'm sorry.
Mr. Beck, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I would like to follow up with Steph, too, when we're finished with the Bucherts. Yeah.
Did I answer your question?
You did, yeah. Well, I guess, so you're really asking for an exception from the norm in a rural wine tasting setting? Because there's no, there's no one else that's staying open till 10?
Well, if you go to Three Horse Ranch, I mean, they have a five-star chef up there, and they're offering food, too. That's what I'm competing with. I, I mean, they, I don't know if you're calling that typical. Maybe this is what's becoming typical in Ada County or in, or in this Eagle Foothills area. Because we are all starting to offer, you know, food, and it's starting to offer other ways to get people to enjoy the wine and to offer, I mean, we just had a chocolate pairing with our, with our, our petit brano and our chardonnay, and we had truffles made with those products in order to offer them for Mother's Day. I don't know if you would consider that an event or not. Maybe you would.
Well, events I can understand. Events I can understand going till 10 o'clock at night if there's an event. But I'm just talking about daily wine tasting, people going wine tasting in a rural setting that usually doesn't consist of sitting down and having two glasses of wine and dinner, staying till 10.
I understand you're from Santa Barbara, right? And we just came from...
I'm from here. I've lived there for 15 years, though.
You have, and we, and we just came from Sonoma in the last few days. And, and we saw everything all over the board. We saw places like ours where people can take a glass of wine. There's a place called Three Back Guys where you can go out in the back and you can sit in a garden-like setting. And in fact, I heard one lady say, you know, I just love this place because I can sit here and hang out and not have to just get out and go to the next winery. So, so I think that there is maybe a little more of this going on. Maybe it's because of COVID, maybe not. But just, there's just more, more attempts by wineries to get to know their customers and share that experience with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So are you saying you, you want your facility to be closed to the public at 8:00, but you just stay open for staff to clean till 10?
That's what we do right now.
So how would people be able to watch the sunset at 9:30?
Well, they're, they're still seeing it go down, I guess. It's starting to set by then. I don't want to have to shuffle out all the customers because they don't like that.
We do try to be responsible. We really do.
Well, Mr. Fiorina, Mr. Fiorina indicated that 8:00 was a fine closing time for him, acceptable.
That's what we do today.
That's what you already do.
That we already do.
Okay. Any more questions of the...
Yeah, and then the events, if there were special events, that would be something that could go till 10, I would think.
Well, wouldn't that be part of your application for your special events?
Special events, yeah.
Center, not...
Right. When we come back for special events, I mean, based on what we've heard with the definition of, of an event, we'll probably be asking at that point for unlimited because if it's going to include two or three, or four or five, or all these people that are coming, I don't want to be limited, and I don't want calls, you know, from neighbors saying, well, you, you, you are exceeding the number of events. This is why we are going now for the event center so that we will do away with the limitation of the 24 and also, you know, how to define one, I guess. So that's the plan, and we actually have our neighborhood meeting scheduled in two weeks.
Well, just so I'm clear, you, you have agreed with Mr., well, Mr. Fiorina didn't agree to it, but you proposed moving your tasting room back about another, what, 100 feet? Was that it?
Feet total.
We agreed to move our tasting room, or keep it 100 feet from the, his property line, which is roughly where it is on the map right now. But we agreed to not put any patio area in that same area. In other words, the setback on the patio area is going from 30 to 100 feet.
Okay, all right. And, and you would not have tremendous amount of difficulty moving your storage, your production facility about 100 feet to the north?
Yeah, we need to take a little closer look at that, but in the ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then can you speak to, Mr. Chair? Can you speak to the size? There's testimony by Mr. Hill that it's gone from 10,000 to actually 12,800.
So can you rephrase the question again?
Yes, Mr. Hill testified that your production facility, proposed production facility is not 10,000 square feet. It's 12,800.
I'd have to take a look at the drawings. Our size on the production facility, I think that we have drawn in on the drawing, is 80 by 120, which is 9,600 square feet.
Do we have the drawings, Steph?
80 by 120?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I don't have those with me right now. But if they have an, like, a covering that comes off from the actual building, we do count that into our square footage, even though it may not be an enclosed area. And so that may be the, the reason that the...
Be the discrepancy, yeah. The lean-to over the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. Hey, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I definitely think if you go with the social hall, we'll have to nail down the definition of event. I mean, the case law I've seen says you can't really rely on the government when they're giving you a legal opinion, that the citizen takes the risk, that the person who's with the government knows what they're actually talking about. So it's, you kind of have to do your own legal research to, you know, never, you know, trust but verify is, is the phrase. I have one question about the, just about the noise. For, for the proposed events you want to do outdoors, are you planning on using sound amplification? Or could they all be acoustic?
Well, they could be all acoustic. Right now, most, when we have a musician come in, even if it's just a string guitar, he'll bring a small amp with him and turn it on. And we have been asked before to quiet it down. Even some of our own patrons have asked to quiet it down so they can visit better, and we've done so. So, I mean, I don't know that we've considered doing it without amplifiers, but...
Because that was one of the proposed, I think, conditions from the appellants. So is that something you'd be willing to agree to? Or do you still want us to consider not restricting that?
Well, I think that what we could do is we could, we could, and we have been since we've started this whole process now, after they've made that complaint, we've been turning all of the speakers and whatnot away from them so that they don't, you know, they're, it's just common sense. I mean, just, just turn the speakers away so that they're not, you know, they're not blaring at them. They have this berm right now, but we still understand they're going to hear, you know, we hear them talking, you know, at their house, they hear us talking at our house. That's not even with a winery. I mean, we are that close that you can still hear that. I, I would, I would wish or would hope that we could have some amplification and then just trust us not to abuse that.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll now take public testimony from... And we'll, we'll now take public testimony from individuals, unless there's any other questions for the.
Rebuttal.
Oh, I don't know. Does Fiorina, does Fiorina or Hill want to do a two-minute rebuttal?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do have a number of individuals signed up to testify, whether in person or online. So I don't know if you want to consider their testimony or consider rebuttal, but just want to make, make sure you're aware of those.
Or I suppose a rebuttal could be at the very end of all public testimony if there's issues that the public raises that could be included in the rebuttal.
That might be more effective.
That might be more, would that be okay? He says, okay, okay. All right. We're going to limit the public testimony to three minutes, and please keep it to the issues that we've talked about. So I have a list here. I'm going to call the list out. Sylvia Hengness. Sylvia is here. I could, I'm sorry if I, if I didn't pronounce your name.
That's all right. It's Hengness. Close, you know.
Okay Sylvia, thank you.
It's totally fine. So do I have to remain on topic, or can I just express my support for the winery and?
It's, it's, it's the same thing. You can say I support the, the winery, and then if you have any additional comments about the lighting or the, or the setbacks.
Um, I wrote a, a two-minute and 25-second letter, but it's kind of out the window now. Basically, what I just want to say is that Dude DeWalt is a very special place, and I feel very blessed to have found it, and so do our over 500 wine club members. They come up, they learn the history of the area, they learn about the sheep ranching, they learn who Dude DeWalt was. I mean, does anybody know who Dude DeWalt was? He was a foreman on the Highland Sheep Ranch in 1920s and 30s. And so it's not just a winery and a tasting room and a production facility. It's a place that people come and they feel like they're part of the Dude DeWalt family. And it's just been my pleasure to retire from corporate America and now work for them for the last year. It's, I mean, they call me a wine goddess, I pour wine for people. That's about all I have, but I do have a neighbor who did write something that's a little more coherent and cohesive than I. If you wouldn't mind if I read her little letter that she wrote today. Ask if I could read it into the record?
Sure.
Would that be okay? Her name is Beth Davidson, and she's a neighbor, friend of mine, and she wants to thank you for your service to our county. I know your jobs are not always easy, and I do appreciate your time served. I was just made aware of the agenda item on tonight's board meeting, and she didn't have time to register. She would like to express her strong support for the recommended denial of the two appeals from Hill and Fiorino on tonight's agenda. There should be no further requirements or conditions added to the original P&amp;Z approval. I would ask that the planning and zoning approval be upheld and none of the considerations recommended at the hearing on 4/14/21 added. As a resident of Ada County, I am a strong supporter of the local agricultural industry and the AVA expansion in our area. It is difficult enough for an agricultural business to survive in this day and age, especially considering the effects of the COVID pandemic and the resulting lockdowns. Our county should be supporting agricultural endeavors, not hampering them. The requests made in the two appeals coupled with the considerations mentioned at the last hearing would have a negative impact, not only on the agricultural business in question, but on future agricultural entities wishing to expand and grow. We are primarily a rural county, with rural counties as neighbors. We should be supporting and encouraging our local agricultural farmers and businesses. From a personal perspective, my husband and I have spent several lovely afternoons at Dude DeWalt Cellars. It has always been a relaxing time. We enjoy many beautiful vistas on the property. I find the owners and staff, along with patrons, to be very respectful of the area. It has never been an overly noisy or disruptive area. In fact, we are incredibly thankful that the owners are willing to share their lovely property with patrons. We always look forward to spending time there and find it an ideal way to enjoy beautiful Ada County. To restrict access, limit hours, and disallow for reasonable expansion and growth would not just have a negative impact on the business itself, but also on every single person that is lucky enough to spend time there and on the local agricultural industry as a whole. Again, I encourage you to deny the two appeals. Beth Cook, Ada County resident.
Thank you Sylvia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Should each, does each person have to state their name and address when they come up for the record?
Their name.
Just your name.
Okay. And are the lights working? How does the light system work? Does the public need to pay attention to the lights on the?
Should, yes. Amanda Edwards. Is Amanda here?
Is she online perhaps?
Uh, she said she'd be in person. Josh Cormier. Is there a Josh Cormier?
Seems kind of redundant to say your name when you've just been called by name. I am Paula Guest.
Yes.
And many of the things that Sylvia said were the things that I intended to say, so I will just say the, that we, my husband and I, I'm speaking on behalf of both of us, totally agree it is our contention that the appeal and the demands put forth are without merit and are unnecessarily punitive. Idaho does take great pride in being an agricultural state, and you don't, you don't have to drive any place around Ada County to see the cornfields turning into housing developments, to see the pastures turning into housing developments. And yet Trey and John are doing the opposite. They are turning unused land into a beautiful agricultural production and vineyard. And John's explanation of what their goal is, when you go wine tasting in an urban, you go from place to place to place, you drink your wine, you leave. Dude DeWalt gives you a different experience. It is peaceful, it is friendly. We have met more people that we want to continue knowing, sitting out on that patio enjoying a charcuterie tray and drinking a glass of wine than we have in any other situation around here. It would be a shame to unnecessarily deprive the people of the county the right to enjoy that, and like Sylvia said, the beauty of that property sitting up there on the top of the hill, and to unnecessarily deprive Trey and John of a way of earning a living and Ada County a beautiful tax revenue. On the, on the map, the one thing that I would say, because we drive up that hill all the time, we love going to Dude, and we go there a lot. The place where they're talking about putting that production facility is on the flat ground right by Highway 16. It has to match the setbacks from the state requirements, but it's on flat ground, and those, those trucks will come in and out a very short distance. If they have to move it someplace else, you're going to hear trucks going uphill. I mean, it's, right now, it's just right there. You get off of Highway 16, and that's where they're going to put the production facility. It makes all the sense in the world.
Could you wrap it up?
I could.
Thank you.
So I think it would be very short-sighted for this commission to validate the demands and destroy something that not only produces a great deal of tax rev, tax revenue, but significant pride and pleasure to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were those lights going off?
Yeah. Okay, James Shirley?
All right, I'll look at the lights. Actually, I go by Pat, middle name, sorry to mess that up, but I live at 6020 North Hillpoint Way, which if you looked at the picture, I'm actually a resident that lives right across the street from Dude DeWalt. So I live right in that area. I live probably the same distance from Highway 16 that Mr. Hill will live from Highway 16. So I look right across the hill, I see the cellars. I have kind of three points. I'm going to cut it down pretty quick because I'm actually looking at the clock too, but the first point I want to address is talking about the berm and the setback, okay? Talking about that for noise, I get that, but if you look at that picture, Mr. Hill has 100-foot of property line that abuts the, the Bucherts, but his entire west side of his property runs along Highway 16, okay? Again, I'm about 1,000 feet from Highway 16. I can hear that in my house 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So when you start talking about where we live, the picture that's been painted is this tranquil, quiet area, and it is, but I've lived there nine years, I watched that traffic pick up, and I can see the growth growing out to us, okay? I think the noise that's going to be from even the production facility is going to pale in comparison to what he hears off Highway 16 every day, okay? So I think when you start talking about berms and setbacks and all that, I think you have to be realistic about what else that area is dealing with, okay? That's probably the key thing. Just for comparison, I have friends in Walla Walla doing a, a winery, so I just asked them, during their production, they are considered a critical industry, and there's absolutely no limits on their production hours. They can go 24/7 during harvests and production. That lasts a few weeks, they're shut down, things are now inside the facility, okay? So when you start looking at comparison, that's what they have to deal with. I think what you're asking them to do is pretty restrictive.
Could, could you wrap it up?
You bet. Sir, that's about all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I, I don't have any. Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Todd Miller?
Mr. Chair, could I ask if staff could put the map back on while we're, the one with the more detail, if you could leave that up there for reference?
Hi, my name is Todd Miller. I live in Boise. I've been to Dude DeWalt a whole bunch of times. I've never, excuse me, experienced or seen an overage of excessive noise issues in their current facility at the, as it is. I've spoken to numerous members and team members of the facility that they've been in conversation to expand it and so on, and I've spoken to Trey a couple of times when I was there recently over the last month or so about what they were trying to do. I can't even remember seeing these guys' homes where, when I'm sitting at the hill looking at the mountains, you know, waiting for the sun to go down and so on. It seems very restrictive to ask a winery to shut down during the summer months when the sun is out till 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night. I don't want them to be unfair to any residents nearby, but it doesn't seem plausible to take away economic vitality from an industry that doesn't really exist that much here in Idaho, and they're building on it. They've been in business a little more than a year. They're a shining example of what, of what quality can do moving forward. And so the taxable revenue that they can bring in and generate to the community is a benefit to everybody. It's counterintuitive to try to restrict their opportunity to create jobs, to create opportunity moving forward and say you can only have X amount of events a year. The big issue today I've heard already is defining event. That's critical, because I show up there with five or 10 friends of mine, and is that considered an event? And based on the latitude of what is not an event or what is an event, who knows? If you're going to ask somebody who's getting married at a winery, and my son was engaged and supposed to get married at the winery, and COVID hit, and well, we know that all went south, are they supposed to shut down at 6 o'clock or 8 o'clock at night on a June wedding or July? That seems a bit unusual, also unfair. How do you expect 50 or 60 or 100 guests to show up at a facility like that and say, oh, well, hey, thanks for visiting, but you got to be out of here by 8 o'clock at night? It just seems counterintuitive to me to restrict a business that's been in business for a little more than a year that's flourishing, and it's flourishing because they're doing all the right things for the right reasons, the right way. They're very accommodating, they're very common sense, they're very reasonable. They're not going to just build this massive facility at the expense of their neighbors, but to shut them down and to constrain their opportunities to be a flourishing business at a time when we've been in economic turmoil for the last year specifically, they're a shining example of what people can do in Boise and, and, and what can happen in this community. It makes no sense to me to curtail and constrain that opportunity from them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to remind people, we probably have over 30 people still that have signed up to testify. You don't need to take all three minutes, if you don't need to take all three minutes, because we'll be here for another hour and a half to two hours. So just keep that in mind, and if you have already heard someone else give testimony that is very similar than to what you're going to, it's also okay to pass. We don't need to hear the same testimony 10 times in a row either, so.
Yeah.
Just being considerate of everybody's time here tonight. We're happy to stay here till midnight if that's what y'all want, but I want to make sure that everybody does get a chance to say something that wants to.
Lenora Diovino Pollard. Pollard?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And just to remind everybody, the issue really isn't the benefit of the winery, it's whether or not the proposed expansion unnecessarily infringes on the neighbors who filed the appeal.
If Serena could come up and sit down in front there. Next, you're next Serena. Go ahead.
Lenora Diovino Pollard, and I work at Dude DeWalt, I have for the last year, and I just have to say that they have been so respectful of their neighbors. I've seen John walking around with her meter, making sure the noise isn't too loud, and there, I've never seen a fight break out at the winery or anybody be excessive in any way. We're very respectful of the laws and everything that goes on there. They're, they're not only in agriculture, but they're also providing employment. They're also making a place where I'm seeing neighbors that didn't even know each other, and they live across the street or down the road. They're coming to the winery, they're enjoying the wine, and they're meeting their neighbors, and they're meeting friends.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, the social benefit of this for, for neighbors is not what we're here to talk about tonight, and again, we need to limit it to the, the areas of what we've already identified numerous times tonight. So we understand, all the neighbors love this, of course you do, we understand that.
Perfect. Well, good. Then limiting.
I wish I were a neighbor, but hey.
Limiting the, the facility to be closed down at 6 o'clock just doesn't work. People come there to relax after work, and they come there to enjoy, and it's just a place for people to meet and enjoy and unwind. And right now with COVID and everything going on, you need a place to get away, and it's a relaxing place, it's a non-stressful place, and I 100% am behind Dude DeWalt and everything that they represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Serena?
Hello.
Next up is Corina. Could you come up? Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Serena Buchert, and Trey and John Buchert are my father and mother-in-law, so I obviously am opposed to the appeal. But I am actually, if you would allow, here to read a letter from the mayor of the city of Eagle, Jason Pierce, and it mostly relates to the closing of the production facility and the wine tasting. If I don't finish it in 2 minutes and 30 seconds, I may just leave it up here for the record if that's possible.
You can admit it for evidence.
Okay, thank you. Dear Commissioners, this letter is in support of the appeal from Dude DeWalt Cellars that will be. that will be heard before the Ada County Commissioners. The city of Eagle recognizes the economic, cultural, and artistic value of the local wine industry. The economic impact is seen at three levels: direct, indirect, and induced. Direct impacts are the jobs, wages, and economic output attributed to the industry, including wine grape growers, wineries, wholesalers, retailers, trade associations, research and educational organizations, and wine-related tourism. Indirect or supplier effects results from firms in the wine industry purchasing goods and services from other industries. These suppliers produce the machinery, tools, parts, processing, materials, and other materials used in vineyards to grow grapes and in wineries to produce wine, as well as to distribute and sell wine. This category also includes different types of services: agricultural, personnel, financial, advertising, consulting, and transportation services, as well as people who are responsible for governmental regulation of the wine industry. Induced impacts, also known as the multiplier effect, are the responses by the economy that occur through resending of income received by payments made to the employees and business owners measured in the direct and supplier parts of the economy. That impact includes the spending by employees of the industry and that of indirect firms whose jobs are dependent on the wine industry. The cultural impact is seen in the growing, making, and selling wine or wine production, which leads to vineyard landscapes which are both physical and cultural landscapes, thus preserving precious agricultural land and farming. Vineyards serve as motives for art and could include educational and scenic trails along with outdoor public and open spaces for memorable and attractive human experiences like weddings, social events, or utilization as a strong identity-creating landscape representing cultural heritage. In the wine industry, an American viticultural area designates a specific geographical region as a historically and topographically distinct producing wines with distinguishable characteristics. Historically, most wine grown in Idaho, as well as some in eastern Oregon, are part of the Snake River ABA, but Eagle has a sub-ABA, all known as the Eagle Foothills ABA. So there's a little left, but I'll leave it.
And that's from Mayor Jason Pierce?
Correct.
You might want to have him correct the first paragraph, because if he supports the appeal, then the appeal is to reject the...
Oh, you're right about that. I didn't even catch that. Opposes the appeal, I'm assuming is what he means.
For the record.
Based on the rest of the context of the letter.
It can be confusing.
Yes, yeah. You can go to... Yeah, you can go to...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Diana, what number would that be added to the record?
I will look and add it into the record.
Okay, we have Karina. And next up is Daniel.
My name is Karina Benelac, and I am an employee at Dude DeWalt Sellers. I first wanted to note, on a personal note, I'm married to a retired law enforcement officer. And for the first time in our 10-year marriage, I am now the breadwinner of the family since he is retired. We have two little ones. And I just wanted to say that cutting hours at any point of the year, whether it be production, whether it be cutting our hours for the tasting room, tremendously impacts my family and I. And I just wanted to give that as my personal testimony. I also am reading a letter on behalf of Barbara and Dan Lady. It starts, "We, as residents of Heron River Subdivision and Star, want to give input to the Ada County Commissions regarding the actions taken by the Board of Ada County Commissioners on April 14, 2021, regarding the appeal of the planning and zoning conditions that were added to Dude DeWalt Sellers conditional use request. Dude DeWalt Sellers is a fabulous addition to the local business community. They have quickly become a stellar winery in the Treasure Valley and understandably find themselves needing to expand. While we know that growth is coming quickly here in Idaho, we understand the desire to keep out development is inevitable. The land will be used at some point for something. We would much rather see the expansion of Dude DeWalt Sellers than a commercial building site or apartments with ensuing trucks and traffic. There is no better use of the property under discussion than to enlarge Dude DeWalt and to add local economy, as well as the overall appeal to the area. The Dude DeWalt Seller expansion is also supported by the City of Eagle Comprehensive Plan published November 2017. In the economic development portion of the plan, boutique and specialty food processing is one of the five major sectors the city of Eagle is focused on developing and supporting. It is the duty of the Ada County Commissioners to support the city of Eagle in their comprehensive plan. Dude DeWalt Sellers has been very accommodating in trying to satisfy the neighbors' concerns, creating a berm at considerable expense to satisfy the Fiorinos, landscaping and maintaining it, abiding by the 24-event restriction and 50-person limitation, using recycled asphalt, which is a greener, more environmentally-friendly alternative to blacktop for the added parking area and road. These show they are operating in good faith as good neighbors." There's more. I cut it short.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, we have Daniel. And next up after Daniel is Lori.
Hope there's not multiple Daniels here, but I'll take it. I'm Daniel Montagetti. Perfect. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to be up here tonight. I'm here tonight on behalf of my wife and I. We have enjoyed many visits to Dude DeWalt Sellers. We have been there in the daytime, evening, till close, special occasions, weekdays and weekends. And I am one of the many people that actually work until 5:00 or 6:00 and then try to make it there in time. So it's very important to be able to get there after work. I've never been to a place that is more caring about their customers and neighbors. During our many visits, we have observed the sound levels to be very low. The parking lot quickly vacates after closing, which is very reasonable time. We appreciate everything Dude DeWalt has done to bring the community together in an already difficult year. They have brought friends closer together, offered a place of laughter, stories, and tears. Tears of joy, that is, and maybe some other kind of tears depending on the person. But I'm just going to wrap it up there and just thank you again for your time. And I do not approve of the...
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Daniel. The rest of my list, I have asked to testify on WebEx. If there are others in the room, I think we will take you first if you want to. So do you have a list of people who've signed up?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I was going to read into the record the exhibit numbers.
Okay.
So from the city of Eagle will be exhibit number 19. And then from the other lady, it's exhibit number 20. It has several names on it.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, as far as testimony goes, I'm aware of three other individuals who would like to testify in person. There may be others as well.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take your testimony now, and then we'll take testimony from WebEx, if that's okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know that we had Barbara Fairbanks, who has...
Barbara?
Good evening. That is me. I am Keith Hill's wife and co-owner of our property.
Okay.
I'm not going to do a lot of what I thought I was going to do here, is to keep it short. But first of all, we just moved here a week and a half ago. We've been putting plans in place for two years, two and a half years, to do this. And we bought the property two years ago. So, you know, to say, well, it's just a vacant lot right now. Well, it's our future retirement home, and we've been putting a lot of money into moving and getting our plans done. So it's not just vacant. It's about to be built on. We love agriculture. That's one of the reasons we're out there. We love that area. But agriculture was not, when we pictured that, we did not picture amplified music and food trucks just around the corner from us. I will say, the back and forth about what is an event, what is considered blacktop, what can or cannot be seen by the Bucherts, it's occurring because the Bucherts and my husband and I have a more fundamental disagreement. And we disagree about what the goal of supporting agriculture should include and whether or not it's okay to violate the adverse impact clause of Goal 3.3D. That's us getting that adverse impact. The Bucherts called us angry people the last time, and I can't disagree. I think that any of you all, and the Bucherts included, would be angry too if your privacy and your peace and your plans for retirement and peace were being threatened. Yes, we are angry about that. We're not angry people, but we are angry about that, and we're very concerned. So what it should... Well, let me say this. I was disappointed in the last hearing about a comment about Commissioner Kenyon's proposed conditions that would it even get the neighbors to stop complaining? Well, for the record, I would be happy with the proposals that Commissioner Kenyon gave last time. I want to mention two, try not to repeat things. We don't have any protection. When the Bucherts say one thing, they do another. We don't have any protection, because if it's after 5:00 p.m., there's not going to be code enforcement. They're not going to go out there. So I just don't know what our protection is when they continue to push the boundaries and cross over them, as they have been doing. So what it should boil down to is being considerate, respectful neighbors. The attitude that they've shown is that they should be able to do whatever they want on their property, whether or not it creates adverse impact to us. Joanna, Jonna, I'm sorry, Buchert herself expressed in her additional exhibit comments, "We do not want calls from the neighbor complaining whenever we are trying to get work done." Well, apparently, work includes amplified music, bright lights, and food trucks into the evening. In other words, shut up and just live with it. And that's what it feels like to us. I care. I don't think they care. I care. And I think any of you would too if you were standing in my shoes. So I really appreciate you hearing me tonight. I would certainly stand for any questions if you had any. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Does anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if we talked too much about the food trucks, but currently, can you... Are they doing food trucks now? Can you see those? Well, I guess you don't have a house built yet, so it's... But when you do potentially build a house, I mean, are those going to be visible from where you think you're going to build?
I guess it depends on where they continue to place them. But we are on a high point, and they are on a high point. And so we see right across to where they are. And I suspect we're going to hear right across too. I don't want to do hearsay, but Fiorinos have heard from our property, from our property. They've heard the noise, the amplified music. So I am just sick and concerned about that.
And do you feel if it was acoustic only, that that would ameliorate your concerns?
I feel that would go a long way. And also moving that production facility, because it's not ju... I just came from manufacturing. I'm trying to retire and get away from manufacturing. But the production facility moving 100 feet north would definitely help. My concern with that facility, we might not even see the facility itself because we are up on the hill and they are down where they're proposing it. But we're going to see lights. Those lights are powerful that they've got planned. Those are stadium lights. Those are arena lights. So yes, I am very concerned about that. But it would help to move that. It would also help tremendously to do acoustic rather than amplified. And the problem with amplified is just they've got all these different musicians coming in, and they all have their own... I won't say all, but most of them will have their own amplification equipment. So it's going to be different every time. It's going to be bad sometimes. It's going to be worse other times. But yes, acoustic would help a lot.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Barbara?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Christine Fiorino, who's signed up to testify.
Christine, sure.
We're not timing this.
Okay, I only have about two minutes here. My name is Chris Fiorino, and I have resided with my husband, John, 8600 West High Ridge Lane for 18 years. And these are my concerns, my comments for this evening. Clean estate homeowners have been accused of complaining. We are attempting to prevent devastating and irreparable damage to our lifestyle and our property values. Had the Bucherts stayed within the original plan that was presented, we would not be here tonight. We like agriculture. We wish that they had, they could put in more than nine acres. That would be great, rather than all the buildings. We certainly do not have a vested interest in the Bucherts' failure. Our intention is not to prevent Dude DeWalt from being profitable. Our concern is the circus, i.e. the food trucks, the live music, lights, noise. Friday and Saturday evenings, especially during the summer, is how I would imagine living next door to a fraternity house for us. I mean, we're in our 70s, okay? And I checked 15 other area wineries, some of them, including Three Horse Ranch, which is out in the middle of nowhere. 13 out of just the 15 that I checked, they close at 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock at night. And some of them are only open two days and on the weekend. So the people who want to get to the winery after 5:00, perhaps they could go on Saturday where they're open from 12:00 to 6:00. You know, this is our home. This is where we live and the lifestyle we chose. And we're trying to protect that and our property value. The tasting room that they're proposing, we would like it as far away as possible. And the patio seating, if that could be between the tasting room that they want to put in and their home, because it's their customers, not ours, that would really help us a lot.
Can you pull up this screen, Diana, again, so we can look at what she's talking about?
And I think that's all.
That's all. Would that... I understand the Bucherts have talked to you and your husband about that patio. Is that where they suggested putting the patio?
I suggested to them to move it between their house and the tasting room.
Okay, is that what they said they'd do, or...
They didn't seem to think that would be a good idea.
Oh, okay.
So Diana, can you point... I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can you point out where their house is?
The Bucherts?
Mm-hmm.
Their house is right here.
Their house is there, okay.
And this is the existing tasting room. And then this is the proposed...
How large is the new tasting room and patio? 3,000?
I will double-check on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next up, I believe we have Travis Hunter.
How you doing, Commissioners? My name is Travis Hunter, 2628 South Wiseway. I am against the appeal, specifically the curtailing of hours. I'm involved in residential development, and a question that I frequently get asked is when are the amenities coming to the area? And the answer is the amenities always follow the rooftops. It's hard to get amenities to pencil for businesses, small businesses, to work, especially if they're not surrounded by thousands of rooftops. Dude DeWalt is a quality amenity to our community, and I ask that you grant them the ability to run their hours until when they have requested, to allow their small business the maximum chance to survive. Last, if you happen to be the neighbors to the Bucherts, you won the lottery. Get to know them, work together with them, and your life will be richer because of it. I've known them for many years, and they're very generous, collaborative, and capable. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
And Mr. Chairman, that's all I'm aware of. There are other names on here, but they could have been for other items, so.
Are there others that wish to testify?
Like, there's a couple.
Yeah.
Come on up and state your name, because I don't have your name on the list here.
Langen Buchert. I actually grew up in that house. So one of the things I wanted to hit on was where their house was and the room I slept in growing up, I was able to watch lights come up and down that highway every night. You could hear the cars. I mean, you kind of got... enjoying wine, and I don't drink wine, by the way, but you can hear the cars through everything. So, I mean, we're hitting on the lights, the blacktop, we're looking at asphalt right there, the lights coming up and down the road, the noise, the offsets, you know, they're 200 feet from a highway. They're closer to the highway than what they were proposing that we be away from there. So I just wanted to make a few of those notes. Definitely opposed to the appeals, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Brett Keller who'd like to testify.
Okay, Brett.
Good evening, ma'am, gentlemen of the Commission. My name is Brett Keller. I reside on Chaparral Road. You know, there was just a comment made to where it was stated that someone hit the lottery. And there could be additional value in some of that. I come from another state. I'm not going to mention where. But I will say that there are some interesting statistics about the wine industry in Idaho. And that is that Idaho is the leading per capita consumer of wine in the nation. Number two is Washington DC, and it is far behind. So what's is happening is we're seeing wineries that are, of course, we've all seen the growth that's happening in Idaho from other states, other areas. What we're seeing is that these new residents are wine consumers. They fit a demographic of people who enjoy wine. They're leaving these other areas for certain reasons of their own. But it seems like the demographic carries a lot of very interesting comparisons to what these people enjoy doing. So having these services and recreational opportunities is certainly key to, you know, a wholesome life in our community. But what it's also causing, it's causing a shortage of wineries and a shortage of grapes and manpower, which is, is, it's just amazing to see how the growth in the wine business is happening as a result of the growth coming here. Because of this, more wineries are going to come, and they're going to plant more vineyards, which will further in, protect agriculture as we know it or want it to be. It'll prevent, you know, maybe some other nice pieces of land from becoming housing developments. I think all those would be true. But this shortage is also, it's actually, I believe, increasing real estate values. I don't see a detriment to having land that's adjacent to a vineyard. Once a vineyard's established, adjacent land's going to be valuable. Many of these homeowners across the road from Dude DeWalt are, they're considering putting vineyards in and on their lots just to grow the grapes and have that kind of appeal of the aesthetics of their place. Once a vineyard is established like that, we're going to see more demand, and I think property values will increase. And I have a terrific case example. I came here to start a winery. And I paid dearly for a piece of property that was zoned properly. It was hard to find. We searched Sunny Slope, prices doubled per acre. We came here, ended up paying way more than we should have for a piece of land. It's basically bare ground and twice as much as residential land that was the same 10-acre size. So I think that the industry is a great asset to Ada County, the Eagle foothills, and really is a part of life as we know it here that's growing. I think it's a good thing. So I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room that would like to testify?
My name is Derek Uppham.
Derek?
Derek Uppham.
Uppham?
U-P-H-A-M.
Okay.
I spent 25 years on Highway 55 in Beacon Light, and I saw the growth and listened to the cars increase, increase, increase. I made a choice to move away from there. I do know, and really my comments was about the noise. Highway 16 has seen tremendous growth also in the last 25 years. And there is noise from those cars that you can hear that oversees any noise that Dude DeWalt would ever make. And it's just part of the growth of the, of the state. The other thing I wanted to point out is, there's a, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, but there's a barn grill just to the south called The Flats. They play music. They also have events. And you can hear that music up there at times because the noise just travels. The other point I was going to make, the Firebird Raceway makes a tremendous amount of noise. And it's, you know, it's a seasonal thing when they're doing all the racings. But my concern is, are those entities going to come under pressure too about noise in the future?
How far is Firebird Raceway from the property in question?
The bar, which one? Firebird?
Firebird. How far is that from the property?
I believe, and I'm guessing, maybe about three to four miles up the road on the west side. And it makes a tremendous amount of noise. I know I can hear it there, and I can hear it even down at The Flats. The Flats is south of the winery on the west side, about, I'm going to guess, a mile, maybe. They play music. They have people out there with entertainment and amplifiers, and you can hear it also. So I just wanted to put that out as perspective. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, are, are there anyone else in the room that would like to testify, offer testimony? We do have a number of people that are on WebEx. Are they still with us? If they are, we can take their testimony. And can you get them?
There's a call-in number that does not have a name. I've unmuted you. If you could speak.
I beg pardon?
Someone's called in on a phone and I, they don't have a name listed, but they've been unmuted and could speak.
Okay. Can they hear us?
They should be able to.
Can we hear them?
They're not talking.
They're not talking.
My name's Craig Naylor.
Craig, Craig Naylor. Hello, Craig. You want to offer testimony?
Craig Naylor, N-A-Y-L-O-R.
Well, Naylor. Okay, thank you, Craig. And you want to offer testimony in this?
I'll be very brief.
Thank you.
I oppose the, the additional requirements. And I feel that based upon the testimony of, of Trey and Jonah this evening, that you find that they are flexible in terms of trying to meet the needs and be respectful of their neighbors. And that's the way they run their business. They're very professional. And they want to make sure that they do the best job, not only for their customers, but I think as, as they've testified this evening, that they're respectful of their neighbors as well. And I support what they're trying to do to move, relocate some of their improvements. So I'm, I'm against the appeal.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else online?
There's another call-in number that's been unmuted.
Okay. Can the call-in number hear us?
Can you say the last four of the phone number?
There's no phone number that's listed with the.
Can they hear us? Hello?
Does it get like a username, user number?
Call-in user four.
User four. Can you hear us?
You think it's you. Just say something.
Maybe we'll come back. I have Brad Van Mueller.
Brad?
Hi, this is, this is Brad Van Mueller, Commissioners, sorry. Brad Van Mueller with Alamoore Development, 18454 North Macabre Way, Boise, Idaho. I highly recommend denial of this appeal. The Bucherts and Dude DeWalt have been a trade partner with Alamoore for the last couple of years. They currently grow grapes on our slopes. They are a fundamental member of our community, and a few of the residents have already, at Alamoore, have testified tonight in favor of this denial. I, I will just stand for any questions if you have, have any.
What, what was your name again?
Brad, Brad Van Mueller.
Brad Van.
Alamoore Development.
Brad Van Mueller. Okay.
It's spelled T-E-A-M-P-O-L.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Are there others?
I have Kent Borgman.
Kent, can you hear us?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, Kent.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have been a friend of the Bucherts for over 21 years. I have also been involved with them in the production of their wine for probably the last seven years. I can speak directly to the production facility, the times, the operations and everything. And what they said was very accurate. During September and October, those are the busy times. We're there late at night sometimes crushing the grapes, and we beam and done it when it's snowing. But, but it's a time that you, you gotta make hay. And so it's very important that there are absolutely no restrictions on production and everything else. After that, it gets pretty quiet. We move inside. We do fermentation. We do bottling. We do all of those type of things. But really, other than, you know, cleaning out barrels outside or those type of things, there's very little noise that comes out of that facility. Also, I, I gotta speak to this light thing. Obviously, the hills have never ever been up to that winery, especially at night or anything. They have run such a low-light atmosphere that this, this comment about stadium lights and everything else just kind of riles me up a little bit. You know, as a child, you know, when people would make up lies about me, my parents would tell me to consider the source. And, and when you consider the source here, these two that are appealing, you've got one who's a direct competitor in the wine sales business, and you've got another one who's never set foot on the property or never witnessed a single thing that they are testifying to. They, the very first time they ever set foot on the property was before the winery was ever open. And I guess today's the second time they ever set foot in Idaho. And, you know, just in, in closing, I propose that based on the non-truthful testimony of these two, that the appeal be denied without conditions. And, you know, and, and as far as Mr. Hill's concerned, there's a special place for him, but it certainly isn't in Idaho.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Do you have a question for the?
Well, not, maybe not a question, but a comment. My understanding of the light issue is that the, talking about lights on the building that is yet to be built, not the lights as they currently are. At least that's my understanding. So to, to, well, just to address that to the, to the last testimony there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to just remind people to keep your testimony to the issues at hand here. And there's no need to, to get personal and be negative towards each other. Thank you.
I agree. Are there others online to speak?
Trying to keep everybody on task.
Megan Schaefer.
Megan Schaefer, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, Megan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Okay. I am a resident of Star, part of Ada County. We have been enjoying Dude DeWalt since they opened. And my family and I, my husband, my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, and many other friends of the family have enjoyed Dude DeWalt for the past, over the past year. And we are strongly opposed to this appeal. I understand that a lot of people here in Idaho, people that have been longtime residents, people that are transplants are very opposed to growth, while the reality is that growth is going to come whether we like it or not. And Dude DeWalt has become a true staple to our community. The accusations or implications that Dude DeWalt has been a detriment to our community is, is very untrue. It has only brought in more people. It has brought in revenue. It has brought in a sense of community to our neighborhood. It has brought in so many things that have helped our community and raised property values. I've been there at least once a week for the past year, if not more. And in all of my times there, it has been a very peaceful, very relaxing environment. The noise has never been an issue. Everyone has been very conscientious of the neighbors and the noise and making the environment as friendly as possible. And I just want to say that we strongly oppose this appeal.
Okay, thank you. Do we have others?
Monica Braun.
Monica, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Monica Braun, and I am also strongly opposed to the appeals at Dude DeWalt sellers being able to increase their productions there. I've listened to everyone's testimonies today, and I think everyone's kind of hit all the points home here. I am an Idaho native, and oddly enough, I love wine, but Dude DeWalt is the first winery I've ever gone to, and I'm 34 years old. I instantly became part of their family. I signed up for a wine club membership right away, and I've been enjoying their facilities. I think they are the most respectful as far as business owners in the area. And I'm very glad someone touched on The Flats 16 as well as Firebird Raceway. Highway 16 is far noisier than any noise that I've experienced personally at any of my Dude DeWalt sellers' winery experiences. As far as food trucks in the plural sense that people have brought up as part of their testimony today, I've only ever experienced one food truck being present at any of their events, as well as primarily vocal and acoustic guitar with some amplification, which if you don't have some type of amplification there at minimum, folks sitting outside of the direct area would not be able to hear music at all. They've always been very respectful in that regard, though, if anyone's asked for noise levels to be kept down. So that's always been something I appreciate as well. Aside from that, I don't really know if I have much to add at this point. I think everyone's kind of touched on the pieces that I wanted to speak about today.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any questions from the Commission? No? Okay, next.
Paul Hudson.
Paul?
Yes.
Can you hear us, Paul?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you fine, Paul.
Yes, thank you. I want to, my name is Paul Hudson. I live at 8604 West High Ridge Lane, Eagle, in the, the Kling Development. I do want to say thank you to your staff. They're extremely helpful. And also to Chairman Beck, Davidson, Davidson and Kenyon. You guys are experienced. You've been in the business a long time, whether it's real estate or whatever. And I appreciate that. Number, I want to say that everyone who spoke tonight, with the exception of Barbara and Mrs. Fiorino, have no dog in the fight. They don't, they don't live close to it. One gentleman across the road, he lives well over 1,000 feet away. He lives across the highway in another subdivision. And so no matter what they say or the volume of them, they are not impacted at all by this project. I think that I would like just to remember, remind you of one of the planning and zoning commissioners, James Birch, who lived in Hillsdale across the highway for several years, 20 years, he said. And his quote was, "It would cause irrevocable damage to our properties." That's a gentleman that serves on your board. Number five, I think they talked about number 24 events, but they don't even exclude, they exclude about private events. And you heard them state they have over 500 members of their private group. private group. I do support Commissioner Kenyon's proposal or suggestion from the previous meeting. I would, I could be happy with the 8 o'clock, not 10 o'clock. It is, it is, it's supposed to be an agricultural endeavor. And I think the bottom line is this, that based on one other thing that James Bucher, Birch, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, mentioned, he said, "These folks started with a pup tent, and they're now asking for a circus." Well, now it's a three-ring circus, and not only that, I got a notice of a neighborhood meeting, but now they want to go with a full-blown event center. We're talking about agriculture, they talked about, "Well, it was our intent," well, it wasn't our intent and stuff, and we're started with approval of seven spaces, they are asking for a full-blown event center. And I humbly request you to uphold this appeal because we are the people that impacted, not the people that would go there and drink wine, not the people who are associated with them and work for them, not their family members, but we alone, who have been here and approved and supported the beginning of five parking places, and now they're talking to 83. I would ask you humbly to accept all of the suggestions of Commissioner Kenyon, with the exception of allow them to go to 8 o'clock. If they clean up after 8 o'clock, that's fine. If they shut down the services at 8 o'clock, that's fine. So I humbly ask you to remember that we, and we alone are the neighbors, were adversely impacted by their ongoing endeavor in the business, not an agricultural endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Do we have others?
Sonia Flores.
Hello, Sonia.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Sonia Flores. My husband and I live in Starr and have been patrons of the winery and are now great friends with the Buchert family since May of last year, and we also strongly oppose this appeal. This winery has served as a community centerpiece, bringing so many people together to share the joys of this beautiful land in a relaxed and quiet setting. On infrequent and rare occasions, music and food trucks have been present, but add so much more enjoyment to the winery in a responsible manner. The music is never played loudly or late, it is background music to add to the ambiance. Furthermore, closing the winery at 6, limiting events to 50 persons, and including intimate gatherings such as birthday or anniversary celebrations as an event is overreaching and so restrictive. The Bucherts have always been so respectful and considerate of their neighbors and have gone above and beyond to appease their requests. As viticulturists, please protect their right to farm act. Please help this family preserve agriculture here in Ada County. Their winemaking is a value-added process that promotes the agricultural endeavors of this county and state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Tacchini.
Tom, can you hear us?
Yeah. Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, fine.
Yeah. So, a lot of the points I wanted to touch on have already been brought up, but I just want to say that my wife and I both work and enjoy the winery, and it's hard for us to get out there before 6 o'clock, so having an 8 o'clock or 10 o'clock closing time is beneficial for a lot of folks that enjoy a little bit of wind-down time at the end of the day, and to be able to meet some quality people of Idaho and Ada County and the Eagle area. And John and Trey are very good people, and I really feel that they are, will do what they can to accommodate, within reason, what they can do to help keep the neighbors happy. And I believe that the appeal should be overturned. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have...
Tom Vargas.
Tom, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we're fine.
Great. Well, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your service. I really want to congratulate you on the Eagle AVA and everything that you've done to create a viticultural region that's gonna provide economic stimulus for the county. And, you know, these kinds of applications like tonight really do set important precedent to allow the kind of activities to continue. Dude DeWalt is doing an excellent job of creating quality vineyard and winery experience, and my wife and I and friends, you know, really enjoy it. I think that you have to allow them to have the ability to create the experience that wineries provide in order for them to survive. And if you don't, it just won't happen. So, in summary, you know, deny the appeal, uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission approval. I think it's important that you allow amplification. I think the comments that they're willing to move the patio back to maintain 100 feet seems to be very reasonable on the Bucherts' part, and the things they've talked about doing in terms of the berm seem reasonable. And with that, I'd say thank you for the time.
Thank you.
That's everyone I have.
So we have no one else online or on the telephone? Okay, we'll take a two-minute rebuttal from Mr. Hill and from Mr. Fiorino.
Should I go first, John? Yeah. I just want to make sure that the Commissioners understand that the homeowners in Klinge State are not against agriculture. All I heard was all this rebuttal from our support saying that we're against agriculture. If today the Bucherts said, "We're gonna plant 30 acres of vines," we'd applaud. Let's have a vineyard. It's the events, it's the tasting room close to our home. Move the tasting room, as Commissioner Kenyon said, move it. Move it to 250 feet. Move it 200 feet, but not right up against our property line where we have to live with it. So again, that's our main concern. Grow all the grapes you want, make all the wine you want. Just give us a little bit of respect and give us a little space for our home. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot to knock down here. Amplification you brought up, acoustic, that's a sensible deal. The 12,800 square foot, that's in the report by the planners, by Mr. Danielson. Their numbers were wrong. 3.3A, 3.3B, and 3.3C. 3.3A is grow agriculturally. We're a huge advocate. And I'm with John. The more vines they plant, the happier we are. 3.3B, hiring people, paying taxes, wonderful, we want that. We don't stand in the way. We had a parade of people tonight solicited and coached by the Bucherts to come in here and say what they said. And they don't have any standing. They live in Starr, they live in Nampa. They want to be able to sit out on the porch afterwards. We are the neighbors. The setbacks, the 250 feet, is a reasonable setback, and they can grow that in vineyard. Their original plan two years ago had all of that as vineyard. This new tasting room is where they said they would grow a vineyard. 6:00 PM. I'm telling you, that's a reasonable, sensible, and thoughtful time. They really want to be a restaurant and event center, not a winery. They have a conditional use as a winery. And in as such, they can't do weddings. In as such, they have 24 events. In as such, they have to comply with 3.3C, and that, all these people, the huge number of people who testified tonight, they don't address 3.3C. No adverse impact to neighbors. We like sitting out, they're such nice people. And I want to address that. By the way, the lights, they are hypercon lights, they are stadium lights, they are 30,000 lumens. That's on their plan. We won the lottery? I don't think so. I'm gonna tell you why. Everybody else, hold on, you're gonna like this. I promise this is quick. Everybody else is friends, family, patrons, folks that they've coached. When we applied for this appeal, I had to call them and ask them for approval to put up the signs. Trey Buchert said, "Why would I help you?" Also, two nights ago when they were talking to the Fiorinos, John said, "Well, let's get Hill and Fairbanks." His quote was, "Nope. Nope, we do not want to talk with Mr. Hill." Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no others to testify either for or against. That being the case, would it be now appropriate to close the public hearing? We will now close the public hearing. Do we have comments from the Commissioners? The public hearing is now closed, and we can make discussion.
Diana, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you put the hat back on? We might need it during our discussion.
Maybe.
You want to start?
Yeah, I will. If you put the, if you put that back up there.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Yes, it is. First, I'd like to ask our lawyer in present, is there anything restricting in the, in agricultural use for hours of operation?
Mr. Chairman, I would have to look that up. I mean, I know as part of a conditional use permit, you can restrict hours of operation, but I don't know for agriculture, so I would have to review the code.
Okay. Well, there's several things that I observed that during this hearing, and I appreciate all the testimony, and I'm happy that we live in a free country where we can talk and where we can disagree and agree, and hopefully we can, we can come to some sort of an agreement that would satisfy at least some of the concerns. One of the things that I did note is, and I think we could put that down as a condition, is the Bucherts were more than happy to elevate their berm between the Fiorinos and their property by 2 feet. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Might remind you, we've closed the public hearing, so to add...
I know. We're not asking. That's what I heard.
So east 2 feet, to the east, they're gonna increase it 2 feet high and...
2 feet high and...
50 feet.
And extend it 50 feet.
For the west, extend it another 50 feet.
I don't know, that was, it was just the other direction. I didn't think, but that's what I heard, anyway. I also heard the offer to extend the patio, to extend the patio room a little ways from the Fiorino's home, making it more palatable to the Fiorinos. And they offered to move the production facility a little bit to the, away from the Hill property. Now, I am not as concerned about the hours of operation because I do know, I grew up on a farm, I know that when you grow up on a farm, you can't limit hours of operation. I mean, when you gotta harvest the grapes, you gotta harvest the grapes, or in my case, potatoes. And, yeah. So I don't know that there should be a kind of limitation on hours of operation. Now, if the DeWalt sellers apply for a, Dude DeWalt sellers apply for a event center, then those, some of those other areas will come into play. The noise, we do have a noise ordinance in Ada County, and I believe it's 10 o'clock, is it not? 10 o'clock is a noise ordinance? Yeah. And so I think those are a couple of the maybe additional restrictions that we can put, that I would support, but not, it's open, we're open for discussion.
Mr. Chair, I just wonder if they apply for the conditional use for the event center, or are we just gonna have to go through all this all over again? And if we couldn't nail down the definition of meeting at least for...
Well, no, no, no. The event center, if the, if the DeWalt, Dude DeWalt sellers apply for an event center, that's when those things will be discussed, I think. I mean, this, this is about the, their conditional use permit that our staff is recommending approval, and I think the thing we can do is add a couple of additional restrictions if we choose to. Is that not correct?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, well, I did also hear, you know, the offer to increase the berm, as well as the offer to move the tasting room, I think it was about 100 feet from, additional feet from the property line. And I did hear about, now, I wouldn't necessarily say they offered to move the production facility 100 feet or more from where it is now, but they said they were open to it. And I think that could possibly be added on as a condition since it seemed to be that it was not gonna be that big of an issue. They did say they'd have to go look at the land a little bit. It might take a little bit more dirt moving. As far as the lights go, I mean, I'm, I don't know if we took direct testimony on whether the type of lights, changing the type of lights would adversely impact the business. You know, I don't know if they need the bright stadium lights or if they could use less powerful lights. The noise, I appreciate that they're sensitive to that. They offered to not do acoustic events only. The food trucks, I mean, to me, that was a little up in the air. So I, there's a lot to unpack here. I think we're, I think we're making progress, though, is finding some kind of a resolution on this tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Davidson, I wrote down, and you were paying attention, I hope, too, that they were willing to go on the east 2 feet higher and 50 feet more linear. But was that just my notes on the west, or did you have anything on the west? You didn't.
My recollection was that was the offer, is to raise it 2 feet and to go an additional 50 feet.
50 feet, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I recall.
So I made it just, yeah.
And that would ameliorate some of the sound and some of the issues that Fiorino's family was having.
Well, I'm very pro-small business and pro-agriculture and all of those things, too. But I do realize, too, that all the folks that testified here tonight were the recipients of the graciousness of the house and the great wine. So I understand that, and they don't live there. And so we're really looking at, is there any adverse impact to the neighbors? Not how wonderful and social and gracious you are and to the economy, adding to the economy, those are all great things, but that's not what we're faced with tonight. So, you know, I really appreciate the Fiorinis working within, the Bucherts working together. I think that that is what Idaho's all about, showing that we can collaborate and we can work together towards common solutions. I think what we've looked at here tonight is definitely to go ahead with an additional berm that was, that was suggested and agreed to by the two parties, the 2 feet that would go up and an additional 50 feet linear, and then... And then I would suggest that the landscaping on there is landscaping that's such, where when you have to trim up the trees for the fire, it doesn't go through, so you maybe plant the trees a little bit lower or something to prevent that from happening. In terms of the setback for the patio and the tasting room, I am concerned that it really, you know, butts right up against, you know, their property. And 100 feet, 100-foot setback, you know, isn't a whole lot there. And that's 3,000 square feet, so that's a pretty large facility that's going to have a lot of people. And especially if you're not, we're not looking at changing the hours potentially late at night. And so I don't, I would like to see a 200-foot setback on that. I just think that 100-foot just isn't enough, because again, you're just right on their property line and the home is right there. So I'd be suggesting 200-foot setback, and that might cut in to the 3,000 square feet a little bit. I don't know. I can't tell from this small map, which is challenging for us to try to do all of this with a little small screen. The third thing that I am looking at is, I don't think that there should be any limited hours for production, that is, ag and farm production. And as Mr. or Commissioner Beck said, you can't really restrict, you know, farmers from their production times. I would suggest to compromise possibly on the production facility to maybe between 50 and 100 feet. You don't want to go so far that it's causing more traffic, trucks coming in with the road and causing actually more noise that way. So I would say anywhere from 50 to 100 feet, and trying to just move that a little bit further to the north would be helpful, but not, again, making it so it negatively impacts the traffic. We hear testimony to that tonight. And then I think that, I think that this really is more, looking more like an event center and not a wine tasting room and a vineyard. And so I would want to make a condition of approval that they apply for that special, that event center, because I think that gives us the definitions. It gives us all the things that we're looking for with the language around a vineyard is just too ambiguous, and you would have to constantly be checking in, and these issues would continue. So I would make that a condition of approval. I would suggest that. I appreciate the two, the three owners. However, I didn't see any evidence tonight to prove that there would be an adverse impact. I didn't see any real estate appraisers or any documentation here. And the fact that the Hills don't live on the property, they haven't applied for a permit, I don't know if they're even Idaho residents, it would be really hard to prove any kind of an adverse impact at this point. And I don't believe that Fiorinis feel that with these conditions, there would be an adverse impact. So with that, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for staff, if we can. How far is the Fiorino's home from the property line?
I think they said 75?
On the side of the screen there, it says Fiorino home, 75 foot from property.
75 feet?
75 feet from property line. So if we, if we, I could support 100 feet. I think 200 feet, I got the impression that would be, that would be a difficult burden on the, on the dude DeWalt property. I think 100 feet would be fine. That would still make it 175 feet from their home. And our legal setback is 25 feet, yes, in our ordinance. So I think 100 feet would be, would be more appropriate. And with the, again, the berm, for the patio, because that's where, apparently where the.
Patio, right.
Yeah, for the patio. The, I don't think that I personally would favor the condition of applying for a event center. I mean, I think that's really up to them if they want to apply to it for an event center. I mean, there's already restrictions on the number of activities and so forth that they have there, and they'd be in violation of their agreements if they went beyond that without the condition of an event center. So I don't, I couldn't support the, they're already checking it out and thinking seriously about doing it, but I don't think that would have, that would have any bearing on this particular application. But other than, other than that, I think we've, pretty much, if we could get some compromise on those two areas, I think we can move on.
Mr. Davidson?
Well, Commissioner Kenyon says 200 feet. Commissioner Beck says 100. What if we compromise at 125, which would make it an even 200 feet total?
With that, that's about the length of this room, right? We measured it last time after the hearing, because we wanted to actually see and feel what that would be like. I'd be fine with 125 on that.
Well, that wouldn't be an undue burden on the dude DeWalt, because I don't know the topography or anything out there, but.
So, Mr. Chair, I think the one thing that's left is kind of the timing, you know, the closing times. Being a vineyard without being an event center, the average closing time is, you know, stated is around 6 o'clock. And so by applying to be an event center, it really changes what they can do there. And so I would, if we're not going to put it as a condition of approval, I would highly recommend that they work with staff on doing that. Otherwise, they might have to continue to check in.
I think they all said the Fiorinos and the Bucherts at 8 o'clock would be sufficient. And if they have an event center, that would, that they would work on the times from there. Is that, I think that's what they said, anyway. Did I miss something there?
No. And I know that the appellants will probably object to that because they feel they can't take the Bucherts at their word, because they felt when they came in for the original application, they were taking them at their word, and then they expanded from that point. But, you know, I don't know if you, you know, whether or not they were honest with their intentions at the first hearing, or they started a brand-new business and saw opportunities to expand after, you know, it's not for us to say. I mean, they have a right to apply for this expansion. You know, so we have to go based on what the Idaho code says and what our regulations say. And it was approved by staff through the P and Z hearing. So I certainly empathize with the neighbors because, you know, you feel you're being infringed upon. And I do agree that you have the unique standing out of all the witnesses, because you're the only ones being directly impacted. You know, it's really a question of how much is the impact? And, you know, you have to look at if dude DeWalt wasn't there, I mean, a subdivision could go in. Somebody could just build a single residential house 75 feet from the property line, and they might have their barbecue every night, and you might hear them talking louder than dude DeWalt people are talking. So that's just, that's just the nature of, you know, property. You can't necessarily control everything that's going to go on property that you don't own. But we are, you know, certainly sympathetic to the concerns, and I think we're getting close to at least finding some kind of compromises here. As far as the event center goes, I just, I don't know. I think we'd probably have this exact same hearing once they apply for that. And I think I'm leaning towards the, you know, if they want to apply for that, they should go ahead, but, you know, we do, we do have the other conditions already agreed upon. So, yeah, I think at the end of the day, you know, there's no amount of government that's going to fix all these situations. You know, you guys are neighbors, and in a lot of ways, you're going to have to work this out amongst yourselves. You're going to have to just try to respect each other's boundaries and be sympathetic and empathetic to each other's comfort levels. I don't think, you know, we are going to be able to solve all this for you. You're going to have to solve it for yourself. We're trying to help you in the process here, but it's going to take some effort, because I know there's bad feelings on both sides. But if you're going to be living next to each other, I think your life's going to be a lot easier if you try to work together than against each other, so.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a stab at it. I don't know. And I just, I also want to say that this is, it is an AVA. It's an Eagle Foothills AVA, and it's on Highway 16. So there's going to be noise, and there's going to be wine tasting activities, and it's just the nature of it. And so anyone living there should probably expect this and hopefully more wine routes to come. That's why we established an AVA. So with that, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move to deny the appeal and modify the application to include a 2-foot additional height on the berm and an additional 50-foot linear. And I think that's to the east, I believe, but I'll let the parties figure that out. Probably staff knows as well. And then.
Can I add that it wasn't along the whole property? Because the berm extends quite a bit. It was just right in that area before the home.
To cover their, it was enough to cover their patio.
Right.
Enough to cover their patio completely.
And then 50 feet beyond that.
Yeah. What'd you say, Richard?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I believe it was to the west, 50 feet to the west.
Okay, it was to the west, okay. So we all know it's to cover the patio. Hopefully, staff is taking good notes. And then we compromise at 120-foot setback for the patio.
25.
125-foot setback, okay. And I think that we dropped the need to apply for an event center, but I would like to encourage them to do so. And then I think on the production facility, that I think give you some local room, anywhere from 50 to 100 feet, move it to the north. But you don't need to move it so far that it's going to cause more traffic, like the woman who testified of the trucks coming in. So I think giving you some local room there will be helpful.
Commissioner Kenyon, do you want to put in a minimum move?
She said 50 to 100.
50 to 100. Yeah, should, I think 50 to 100.
So minimum 50. If they wanted to move it 300, they could.
Yeah, minimum 50. That gives them enough of a buffer. Again, the Hills property, their home is quite a ways down there, and their Highway 16 is going to be more of a problem than that facility. And then I think we have on the lights, let's make sure that those, they're on the dimmers that we talked about, where if workers are not there, they automatically go off. So they're not just on constantly all the time. So the motion detectors, and I think that would be it.
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, Commissioner. I will, I will second that. And, you know, I will, regarding the amplification of noise, I will leave that off and leave that to the parties to hopefully work that out amongst themselves in a neighborly fashion.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for staff. Is it clear enough for you? And we can write this up?
Mr. Chairman, I believe so. We've got some good notes here. I think there's three note takers. I could read back what we heard, if that would be.
Sure.
Okay, sure, read it back.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're hearing a motion made by Commissioner Kenyon to deny the two appeal applications, but modify the conditions of approval to also include a 2-foot addition on the height of the berm and also adding 50 feet of linear feet towards the west.
Well, 2 feet only in the area that affected the house.
Yeah, I don't know if it's 50 feet.
Not the whole length of the berm.
Just to cover the patio. Yeah, may not have been 50 feet. Sufficient to cover the view from their patio, Fiorino's patio.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, that's 2 feet additional height to cover the patio plus a 50-foot linear extension to the west?
No, plus just an extension sufficient.
To cover the patio.
Yeah, we don't know if it's 50 feet, whatever it takes.
Okay.
So linear extension to the west to cover the patio.
Right.
Okay, that followed by a 125-foot setback for the patio adjacent to the proposed new wine tasting facility.
Right.
A condition to move the production facility to the north between 50 to 100 feet, and a condition to automatically, or to install lights that automatically dim, so they're not on at all times. Anything else?
And then I'll finish my motion and direct staff to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law consistent with our decision, and table the matter to, what do we need to do?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I'd look at staff to see timeframe that you would need to prepare that information. We could probably table to an open business meeting, if that would be acceptable to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So do we have a date?
Let me pick a date.
Well, how long will it take you to prepare it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, how about we look at the 25th?
25th of May, to our open business meeting. That would be a Tuesday.
Okay, to the 25th of May, 2021, open business meeting to adopt the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law.
So that would leave the hours with the original conditions on the, which are 10 o'clock.
Yeah, with the noise ordinance. And then if it changes if they apply for the event center.
That conforms with our noise ordinance, and then if there's an event center, then they have to work a whole different situation.
Whole different application.
Well, I think I'm clear. Okay. Yeah, he did. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. I think I'm going to have the clerk call roll.
Mr. Kenyon?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
You guys have it.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Re-adjourn.
With that, and I don't even have a gavel. Motion.
The gavel.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, everyone.